And so we'll start, as we always do, with public comments. Is there anyone here for a public comment? Not related to something on the agenda, generally. So if there's not anyone here for public comment, then we'll move on to our agenda and...
Excuse me.
Yes?
Do you mean like the common license and so forth?
No, no, no. No, just about topics not on the agenda itself. So we'll get to that in a minute. So we have a few things under our licenses, public way and metered parking reservations is a general section of our agenda. I think we have folks here for that. So I think we'll start with the folks that are here for Halloween Fest. That would be you. All right. Great. Thank you. So just tell us about the event a little bit and, you know, if you want to mention, so start by your name and who you're with, and then if you want to guide us through your event and tell the town about that a little bit, and then we'll talk about what we need to do. Thank you. Relative to the reservation space, so...
Awesome. So, good evening. I am Stacy LaCue from Amherst Leisure Services, and I am here to request the North Common Parking Lot and the North Common and Pleasant Street, from the North Common to Kellogg Street for our annual Halloween Fest. And this year is our 50th year, so we've made it to 50. It's going to be a fabulous event. I expect, last year we had between 2 and 400. I think it was 400 by the time the parade actually hit the Bang Center. It's a great event for families, little ones. We all get dressed up. I am, I have been the witch for the past 10-plus years. We'll leave it at that.
A good witch.
Right. Something like that. I do that just to be recognizable, so that people understand where we're going and where we're doing. We meet at the North Common. We'll have some sort of little event. We're kind of in the planning stages, either pumpkin roll or pumpkin decorating. We'll meet there. Amherst Police has always been great about meeting us out there, stopping traffic, kind of guiding us down, and bringing us to the Bang Center. I've had some non-formal or informal conversations, and they are more than willing to help us out again and be the back, front and back of our parades. So it will be happening on Sunday, the 28th, weather permitting. We did have that one year where it snowed, so we're all going to cross our fingers that that doesn't happen again. But it's Sunday, October 28th. Starts trick-or-treating with the businesses. We'll start at noon, but for our purposes tonight, we meet at about 1:00 on the North Common Parking Lot to start our parade. Any questions?
Thank you. Are there questions? If not, then I'll entertain a motion for the reservation that we need, which I think is on our new motion sheet as well as our old one as well, I think.
7B.
It's under B, 7B.
I move to approve the metered parking reservation of the Main Street Parking Lot on October 28, 2018, from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. for the leisure services and supplemental educations, Halloween pumpkin decorating. Stacy LaCue, Program Director.
That's me.
Is there a second? Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
So that's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. I hope to see you guys there.
Great. So next up, we have a request for parking meter reservations on North Pleasant Street and Boltwood Avenue for the Valley Kid Fest on September 29th. So if you'd like to come up and introduce yourself and tell us about your event and sort of your need, and we'll go from there.
So my name's Maura Roberts. I work at UMass, representing the Office of Student Parent Programs. And so this is an event that we do in collaboration with Valley Kids. It was formerly known as the Apple Harvest Festival, and now we are the Valley Kids Festival and Craft Fair. And so this involves, there's crafts, there's things for people to purchase, we have performances that are free for people to come to, and then we also do little games and petting zoos and things, which we charge for, and all proceeds go to the Amherst Family Center. And so this is happening on September 29th, from 10:00 to 4:00. And so we were hoping to get the meters bagged on Boltwood and North Pleasant, so that our vendors can unload and unload up.
Okay. Thank you. So do we have, I'm looking at the motion.
You don't have times on the motion.
Right, I'm looking for that, too.
And do we have specific, presuming you need them for the whole day?
Yes, yeah.
All right.
People will start coming at 8:00 to unload.
And then... Street, okay. So it's narrowed to the Town Common?
Entire Town Common perimeter?
That it would seem.
Seems unlikely.
Well, and then what about Spring Street, which is inclusive of that?
So it's on the part of the Town Common across from the Lord Jeff, so I believe it's a south Town Common.
So it would be Boltwood between College and Spring, and then it would be North Pleasant between College and Spring. And that's actually South Pleasant Street.
I'm confused.
Yes?
So this is not your fault. We're talking, we're trying to figure out our paperwork here at this end. And so we don't actually have a letter in here anywhere from them that says what they wanted. We only have a motion. I'm confused by that. We usually have a map. We usually have a letter that says, "We want the same thing we got last year," and perhaps since we don't seem to have any of those things for some reason, maybe we could, we could ask them to ask, right? But we could also ask them if there are any changes versus last year, if she happens to know, depending on...
I do know.
Great.
Sorry. So we are running this this year. It was a previous person before, but it'll look exactly like it has every other year. So we would like the same thing as previous years.
So I would suggest that we allow us, because we have, you meet on Monday?
Right.
There's plenty of time. You could bring a motion with the map and everything for your action on Monday.
Okay. Why don't we do that?
Or try and make it...
Yes.
Okay.
So what were the hours of the event itself?
It's 10:00 to 4:00.
I think that my concern is that if the event ends at 4:00, what time could the parking be yielded? Because there are people who go to Amherst Cinema on Sunday night and look for parking, and I don't want to tie up spaces longer than necessary.
Right.
Yeah, we could, it could definitely just between 8:00, be 8:00 and 5:00, because we just need 4:00 to 5:00 to let people unload, if possible, or to reload.
Right. So I think, though, what we need to do is to sort out the specifics for our motion. Not your fault, more our fault, to sort of nail down the particular meters and streets, because it sounds as though you don't need the entirety of the envelope of the Common, but just the southern part where the green space is, not the trees part.
Right. Yes.
So we'll have to figure that out, whether Spring Street's involved or not.
So we'll look at what we did last year, and that should be fine with that, if they did the same thing last year.
Yeah, that would be perfect.
Okay. We'll bring that back to the board on Monday, and hopefully there doesn't seem to be a lot of opposition, as long as it's the same.
Okay.
Okay.
So thank you, and I hope everybody can attend on the 29th. Yes.
I appreciate what you said about figuring out what we did last year, and hopefully we did, hopefully we didn't make this mistake last year.
Oh, we might have.
Sometimes we repeat. But the other thing, if we, when we are revising the motion to show the specific parking spa, you know, the X amount of parking spaces on X roads or whatever, if we could also indicate that this does benefit the Amherst Family Center, since Valley Kids Fest is not like saying, you know, Rugers or something, that we all know what that is.
Oh, because it's...
It's a benefit.
Maybe.
Yeah. Well, and it, just anytime we're doing a thing, it seems like we should show who it's for, like we do for Big Brothers, Big Sisters, for example.
Thank you. So next, we'll take on the, we have a, excuse me, we have a common victual license for North Hot Pot, 20 Belcher Town Road. And so if you folks will join us and tell us a little bit about your place of business, feel free to move a chair up. Introduce yourselves, tell us a little bit about your business, and then we'll take up the license itself.
Okay. Hello, hello. Hi, everyone. Thanks for coming and thanks for listening. This is Jeremy. My Chinese name is Jerry Liu, so it shows on the paper. So my English name is Jeremy. This is my partner, Jian Huang, Jason. So it's kind of interesting, like I just graduated from UMass Amherst two months ago, so I really love this town, so that's why we started to open a restaurant here, to contribute more. And then, after a few months, we find a good place in the 20 Belcher Town Road, Michael's Billiards Bar, so we take over their business and try to open a hot pot. Hot pot is kind of new stuff here, but it's very popular in Boston, New York, almost, almost many places in America. So we want to bring this fresh restaurant to Amherst, because we have many international students here, and we have many local students here. So in this case, I think more and more people love the hot pot. So what the hot pot is, is like, we're going to offer the raw food, the meat, and the vegetable to customers, and bring the soup to all the customers. And the customers will put the raw food into the soup. We have the induction, so induction going to heat the soup, make sure all the foods will be wrapped. For the meat, we're going to cut it pretty thin slice. So in this case, as long as the temperature is enough, at least 15 seconds, the meat will be 100% safe. And for the vegetable, we're going to put the guidelines in the menu to make sure everybody can cook it around two minutes, at least two minutes, to make sure everything is pretty good and safe. And then we have, yeah, we have enough parking lot space. We have around 42 parking spaces, and including the handicapped. Yeah, and that is located in the big crossings, so I think, what about the, whatever the traffic or something, I think our restaurant is going to handle that. So, yeah. Any questions? We're happy to hear. Thanks.
Questions? Ms. Brewer?
So for our own benefit, the motion once again says Amherst, and since we don't approve the common picks for things that aren't in Amherst, I just assume leave that out. I do appreciate the street address. A question I actually have for the town manager, perhaps more so than the applicants, is we do have a restaurant in town that has hot pot tables installed, and there was a large bit of confusion about that when they were first installed, and they weren't able to use them at first. There were, there were very specific codes that were involved, and apparent, one story, which may not be true, but one story was that maybe they bought them one place that didn't meet another place's standards, et cetera. And so I don't actually believe they've ever been put into use in that particular restaurant. The restaurant has been open, which is under different management now, next to Ms. Saigon. But the, just in terms of the confusion, I know that, because they had a restaurant in a different town, maybe different rules, and maybe they had the tables a lot longer ago, et cetera. So are we going to have difficulties with that this time out, is what I'm wondering? Because we tried this, and it got difficult.
Right. Thank you. The Fire Department, I believe, has already raised the issue in terms of whether the equipment they want to purchase would be acceptable, in terms of our codes, electrical codes and Fire Department codes. So I believe they've already, they're, I'm told that they've had that, they're in that conversation with you about what kind of equipment you'll put as the hot pot on the table.
Yeah, I got you. So all the equipment is from China, and we're going to deliver all the equipments on the boat, by the boat. And in this case, the town hall already have the conversation with us, so we talked to the manufacturer to take up, talk about the UL label and the ETL document. So in this case, they told us, like, they really have the document, but it probably take a while for the process, and give us the document to show up to you guys or town hall. So in this case, like, I promise, like, we are not like, kind of, really, really stupid, like, buy something, it's unsafe and really bad. We need to make sure, like, everything is pretty safe and good quality. So in this case, we trust our manufacturer, and they promise us they're going to give us the document as quickly as possible. So in that case, we're going to give, show the document to show all the equipment is has good quality and safe for sure. Yeah.
So, yeah, so the Fire Department says we need to see the UL certification, and they don't have that yet.
Yes.
But they are aware that that's a requirement before you can open and, or before you can use these tables?
Definitely. Yeah, we also want to make a promise, like, we're going to show the other document to make sure the town hall no, won't worry about the safety or something, then we're going to open that. We won't open that before we give you the, a document. Yeah.
Thank you. I just wanted to be sure that was clear, because I know that was a confusion point in the previous restaurant that tried to do that. So hopefully, we can explain it even easier than it's done around.
Is there...
One other thing, I think. So there is a liquor license for Michael's Billiards at this location, but they are not seeking to acquire the liquor license. And so Michael's Billiards still has that liquor license, but it, they're not seeking a renewal of it either. So this, these gentlemen will not be coming to you, as far as I know, unless you apply for a liquor license in the future.
Yes.
So the follow-up, then, and it did take me a few minutes to realize when I was reading the packet over the weekend, that this is for the Michael's Billiards site, because there's nothing there that indicates that, other than the street address, is, as you indicated, they do have an active license right now. They've indicated, it sounds like to you, that they are not planning to renew. They are not currently in operation?
No.
So it's a form of pocket license, but it's for a relatively short period of time.
Right.
And it's not preventing someone else from obtaining a license at this point. It's not holding on to something that's a resource that others are therefore unable to apply for. So it'll just wind its time out, and, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. That's helpful.
Other questions from the board? If not, I would, entertain a motion, or if you have a comment or question?
No, no, this is a motion.
Okay.
I have, I think every, I don't think with one word eliminated, I think we made a lot of changes. I move to approve the common victual license for CHN Northern J&amp;J Corporation, doing business as North Hot Pot, 20 Belcher Town Road, Monday to Sunday, 11:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. the following day. Jerry Liu, manager.
Is there a second?
Second.
So we have, we have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that's unanimous. Wish you very best of luck in your new restaurant.
Oh, thanks very much, yeah.
Thank you.
Actually, we are pretty nervous, but thanks, you guys are really nice.
Good.
Thanks.
All right. Great. Thank you. So just to touch base on our agenda a little bit, we do have a public hearing at 7:10, so we won't start that early, but we do have other things to take up. We'll get to our consent calendar later. So I think we'll hopefully be able to do our fourth quarter year-end budget update. Is that possible, for that to happen in 15 minutes? I presume it is, since there's no, to my knowledge, no surprises. So if you want to come forward and give us your report relative to the budget, please. That would be great.
Good evening. Sonya Aldrich at Comptroller, and I'm here to present the fourth quarter and fiscal year ending report for fiscal year 18, and during June 30th, 2018. Our general fund generated an operating surplus of $1,567.89 against a budget of $79.9 million. This is, this is great, considering we had such a difficult year, fiscal year 18, with our health insurance deficit, that we covered within our existing operating budget. Caught me off guard a little too soon here. Everything is spelled out here with the revenues that came in and the expenditures that come in, so I'm just going to go through some, highlight some of them, the ones that stand out the most. Fines and forfeits. Actual revenue was 130% collected, and this is due to zoning violations at the presidential apartments that were collected this year. So this is a one-time source of revenue, and it won't occur again next year, hopefully. Investment income is at 145%, and this is mostly due to CD investment timing, or when they mature. We still budget very conservative in this revenue stream. Misalign is non-recurring. The actual receipts here are 106%, and I know there was a request to have a little more detail on this. This is where we book the UMass funds received for the strategic partnership program that we have, agreement that we have, and Amherst College contributions that come to the town. So Amherst College, we received $80,000 this year. The UMass strategic partnership is $120,000. And then we also received $163,241 from UMass in lieu of hotel motel taxes. And then there was about $7,000 in miscellaneous income there as well. Other departmental rent, departmental receipts were at 160% collected this year, or $163,000 in excess. And the bulk of this is increased fees for the planning board, that's in that category, and prior year refunds, and increased fire permits. Prior year refunds was $69,000. $58,500 of that was a reimbursement for Wildwood debt, MSBA, it's timing. Because it didn't come in on time, it becomes a prior year refund. That's what's there. Penalties and interest at 176%. This is due to large tax liens collected in this fiscal year. Revenues that were below. Our licenses and permits, this has been trending down, as the large construction projects have been trending down, so our budget hasn't been adjusted. Property tax and state aid are as they should be. On the expenditure side, surplus funds returned were $291,981, and that's a really small amount compared to an $80 million budget. And again, this is due to us covering our health insurance, increase in health insurance for fiscal year 18, within our operating budget. The select board town manager budget was overspent by $20,000, and this is a largely, this is due to the assistant to the town manager retiring, and to, for the payouts for that, and then some charter commission expenses. And it's here, we do account for that separately. We have separate accounts for that, so we can definitely say what was spent out of the charter. It just grouped in here with the town manager, but that's the way UMass wants it grouped in with the select board town manager operating section. And I can give you more details on what was spent in the charter, if you want, after I'm done here. Public safety turned back $60,000 amongst all, all the entities. Public Works turned back $8,000. Savings and streetlights and equipment maintenance covered the overages in the other areas of that, of the division, other divisions of that functional area. Planning, conservation and inspections turned back $13,000, and community service turned back only $10,000. However, at the annual town meeting, we moved $125,000 from community services to general government to cover some of the health insurance overages. So it really was over $100,000 returned there, and the bulk of that was from veterans benefits. We've, we paid out less this year. And leisure services, the reorganization of leisure services saved us quite a bit of money this year. Schools turned back 25 cents. Again, they were dealing with the health insurance deficit, too. Enterprise funds, all returned, all, all returned funds to the, for free cash, to increase their free cash, except for sewer. We had lower consumption from fiscal year 17 to 18, water consumption, and this is basically due to having so much rain, that we weren't, we weren't watering gardens or lawns during the summer months. And Paul mentioned this morning to me that with the, when the colleges are, were under construction, they use a lot of water in that construction, so it was probably higher last year than it was this year, so. And that's pretty much it.
Are there questions? Comments?
There's one. And that is on the revenue side, under property taxes, the amount that was budgeted and the amount received, the actual revenue difference was about $750,000. Was that due to new growth, or in things coming online?
It's collections from prior years, taxes. Because our collection rate for fiscal year 18 taxes was 99.5%, so we collected quite, did really well in our collections for this year, but then there were other prior years that we collected. 2017, we collected 646, which is not part of what that is budgeted.
So the new developments that came online was already built into the estimates to begin with?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Brewer?
So I had a couple, and I appreciate the breakout on the Amherst College and UMass funds, because it's important to recognize the separation there, and hopefully someday we can find a way to continue to do that. I realize that munis is what you have to work with, but it doesn't make any sense to me, and it doesn't need to. I just need the words that you put in the explanations. The, it's also important, because you, Amherst College, for example, donates that $80,000, but Amherst College doesn't pay anything for fire service, whereas UMass does that 120, and that then also pays for fire service as part of the strategic partnership agreement. So it, sometimes people make assumptions about, you know, where all that money is, and there are different ways of accounting for those different contributions that they make. I did, I had asked also about the lower consumption, and so we're basing it, so I was wondering, you know, where did the drought feed into this, and all the other things? So we're saying it's lower construction use on the campuses? They needed more before?
So it's a common, it's a combination. It's, when they're building the big science center specifically, they have to water the concrete constantly, so that's, that's a big piece of it. But also, it, we just use less water, in general, as a, as a community. So it is both of those pieces together. We had an inordinately high use, high demand the prior year, and we had a lower demand, both through construction and through weather-related. And this summer will probably be a lower usage as well, because this summer was fairly wet.
And the sewer is based, the sewer that you pay is based on the water that you use?
Correct.
Right. And I was trying to, I mean, if we were going to take it as a win, because we did new conservation measures, great. But if it's also just because we had an unusual year, and now we're back more to a normal year, then that makes perfect sense. And then the, I would like to, it doesn't have to be at this meeting, but I would like to have us have a reference document on the charter commission expenses.
Sure. So we can give you a report. I mean, we have a spreadsheet, but it's, I think we can make it a little more understandable for you, so you can see where the category, the big categories were to the Collins Center, which was the bulk of the money, to KP Law, which did work on reviewing the charter. We separated that out. For printing, the charter booklet, which was about $5,000, and for the mailing, for the, those, and then they, there was some costs incurred in terms of people who were videotaping or their meetings and things like that. But we can break that out in categories for you, so you can see where, where the money came from. And so they, I think the total was $45,000 that we, we spent. And, you know, I felt it was important for the legal advice to be given to the charter. So it was more than the appropriation plus the $5,000, and so that, I authorized that to come out of the town manager's budget as well, because it's, we needed to get it right, and we needed to, and they needed to get the legal advice to make sure it was right, done right.
And I'm in no way disputing that those were the appropriate charges. I just think it would be useful, because there was a lot of talk about how incredibly expensive.
Yeah.
And of course, it has been incredibly expensive, associated with people's time working on many, many things that you don't get to charge against that account. But in terms of the very specific things, like postage and printing and additional legal help, I think it's worth being able to show that accounting.
We'll do that.
So thank you.
Are there other questions or comments relative to the fourth quarter? When, since someone... When, since someone threw their hand up right away, I'll ask this question. So, you're in the process of submitting the final numbers to the state and getting free cash certified and all that, what's sort of your expectation about when those will be sort of tidied up with the state? What do they usually do as far as when they're?
We're actually, the town's collected all the outstanding grant receivables that are coming in, we're waiting for a couple for the school, and as soon as they do, it's all set to go, to be sent in, so it could be as early as next week, or it might take two or three more weeks before I submit, depending on the receipt. Because if we don't receive those, it hits our free cash.
Right, right. Ms. Brewer.
So, I don't know if I really probably opened this can of worms, but it's nice to see that we came out so much ahead, which seems to be somewhat of a pattern, and I get that we budget in a conservative manner, and then we do better on revenue than expense, that's good, but some might say, if we're so consistently over our estimates, why are we being so frugal on some of our lines? And so, I think this sort of, is this the right amount to be over? And how do, historically, is this, is this really where we're trending, or is this just a good year and offsets a sort of potentially bad year?
I, I feel that if you go back and, and do the comparisons from year to year, you'll find that the sources of money, for excess money, come from different places practically every year, and some, and also, we can't forget the Medicare D reimbursement that comes in and goes into the general fund, it's not budgeted for, so it's part of that big number, and it gets, and it gets, comes out and goes into OPEB, so there's a lot of moving pieces there. So, I, I wouldn't say that this can be counted on every year.
I'd like to add to that, it, it's not like magic and just, you know, we bulk up all the numbers, there's active management of all the budgets, and the comptroller, Ms. Aldrich, works very hard and identifies weaknesses in people's budgets very early in the fiscal year. Fire Department was, was one example this year, that she brought down the hammer and really was, had them really looking at all their expenses for the rest of the year, so that they came out in the, in the black. It wasn't just, oh, well, that happened, there was active management of all of our budgets coming from the comptroller's office, so I think it's not just something that happens, it's, it's really terrific active management of the budgets that makes it happen.
Understood, I just, I think you've heard the comment on the other side.
I think the critical point that she made, though, with regard to that, is that those sources that create those excess, which is a really tiny percentage of the, of the whole budget, quite frankly, are always different. So, there's, it's not like it's always the same section of the budget that kind of gives us this chunk that we can call, you know, get turned into free cash. So, I think because of that, it makes it, you know, it's not predictable. So, it's nice that it has been coming out in our, in our sort of favor in that regard, but it's not, if it was always the same section of, of our budget that always, you know, turned back a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, then we need to budget that section of our budget differently, but that's not the case.
And I do appreciate the active management comment you made associated with that, it doesn't just happen, because, because we just build in big numbers and then it all works out great, so thank you for that. One other aspect, following up on something Mr. Slaughter said earlier about timing of free cash certification, et cetera, so one of the transition pieces we know is, is a challenge, is setting the tax rate, because we usually do that right around the time of the swearing in of the councilors. So, how are, what's our timeline on that, do we know at this point?
The, the assessor and the board of assessors have had that on our calendar for November seventeenth and thirteenth, and they've got the ad ready, everything's ready to go.
Okay.
And they're, they're ready to go, they could go this week if we wanted to, but we think.
Awesome.
Not quite this week, but there's advertising requirements, but we're prepared for that. November thirteenth, I think, is, is that the date? Yeah.
Right. Thank you so much, and again, we're having to make all sorts of shifts in all parts of the buildings, not just this building, so I appreciate that.
Right, great, thank you very much. Is there another comment? I don't think so, but thank you very much, appreciate that. So, it is actually seven-ten, and we have a, a public hearing relative to an all alcohol license application for Jakes at the Mill, sixty-eight Coles Road. Christopher Ware is the manager, so if you want to join us. I do have to formally open this hearing, right? So, I will formally open this hearing at, I'll get the iPad time for, I can hit the button. Seven-eleven will be our official start of our public hearing. Note of that. And so, we'll dig our paper out, because there's plenty of that relative to this, so give us just a moment.
Certainly, yeah.
That's the whole thing. So, if you'd introduce yourselves and tell us a little bit about the addition to your offerings that you're seeking, and, and then we'll ask some questions, and we'll see if...
Great. My name is Christopher Ware, I'm one of the owners of Jakes at the Mill on Coles Road.
And I'm Alex Washett. It's nice to be back and see you all again.
Yeah, thank you. So, our plan is to obtain a full liquor license for our restaurant, to be able to serve brunch-style cocktails during the legal hours until three, when we close, three P.M.
Specifically, we're, we're just looking to do mimosas, so that would include champagne and juice, and Bloody Marys, which would consist of vodka and tomato juice and guacamole.
Do you want to tell us a little bit about training you're doing?
Yes, so.
License, you know, ID checking, that's what, you can kind of walk us through what your processing procedures are going to be.
With our business in Northampton, we have had a beer and wine license there for the last six years.
Six years.
Six years. So, we plan to do what we have done there, get all of our staff officially TIPS-trained. We plan to have software in order to, to check IDs as well, and that's kind of, kind of the specifics of those.
Right, and then infrastructure-wise, we have, you know, lockable equipment to store the alcohol, and really, because we're just looking to do it in a very small capacity, once again, just mimosas and Bloody Marys, you know, our inventory is extremely low and very easy to keep track of.
And a lot of our current staff there has experienced bartending and with alcohol sales.
Right, as does our, our front house manager, specifically in Amherst, comes from a, you know, decade-plus of specific bartending experience, knowledge of the, the few different systems that we're looking at to implement software systems that we're looking at, and TIPS-certified as well.
Does the board have questions? Ms. Brewer?
So, of course, we always like seeing that there have been no prior disciplinary actions, and so I appreciate you sharing your experience with Northampton, and full disclosure, I've been to their restaurant many times in both locations, especially this one, and was in fact just wondering the other day, hey, when are we going to be seeing this application? And here we go. So, because you had indicated to us back when you did the Common Vic, that you'd be going down this road. You mentioned that you've been doing beer and wine in Northampton, I know Northampton has a shortage of licenses, and so that's certainly part of that. You also mentioned mimosas and Bloody Marys here, but this being an all-alcohol license, there's nothing stopping you from the next day deciding that you want to have beer and wine, and so while that might be your current business plan, it's that we understand that we can't limit them to that. And so, that is part of the nature of the public hearing, I suppose, because there, I suppose it's possible that some people would look at those things differently, but again, it is a breakfast and lunch place, it is not a late-night place. And were the hours to want to be extended, because someday you just have to be open all the time, then they would come back for extended hours, but the, because this alcohol service would be limited to these hours, even though it would be all alcohol, even though they don't intend to use fully all aspects of the all-alcohol license. Does that make sense? Is that how we're understanding it?
Yeah, all alcohol means they can serve anything.
Right, but they, but they can't, while they can choose to serve any kinds of alcohol beyond what they're talking about today, they cannot choose to serve past three P.M. if they decide to start keeping the restaurant open later than that, because we are approving an alcohol license that ends at three P.M.
Right, your motion will reflect what hours they're allowed to operate.
That's what I wanted to be clear on.
Just a, a follow-up, because I was thinking, you know, once we grant it, it's then all alcohol, and it's nice to know what your thinking is, but, but we're not limited, we couldn't and shouldn't limit you to the mimosa, Bloody Mary thing. But I think you had mentioned, last time you were here, about thinking about possibly doing some special events, like, you know, a Sunday, I'm making this one up, but like a Sunday night gathering, so if you were to have alcohol for that, you would come in for a one-day license, or how would that work? Right now, they couldn't, you couldn't use your alcohol license, say, after three o'clock, but you had an evening event. In order to provide alcohol for that special event, what would they, what would they need to do to make that legal?
Exactly, according to the law, you can't get, have a one-day license if you already have a license premises, so that would not be an option.
Well, and, I mean, and as, as you know, I mean, no business is a set structure, and certainly, this is our, this is our, our focus right now, from seven A.M. to three P.M., that's the hours of operation, we run it for seven years now. But certainly, if, if the plan isn't working, and we do have to, you know, adjust our business model, definitely some, some clarification as to, you know, that process going forward, if we do have to make those adjustments, if we do have to do different hours or expand, expand hours, or we do have to start doing onsite catering at some point to supplement the increase in X, Y, and Z, you know, where, where would, what would the necessary steps have to be taken, then, I mean, that's really kind of more of a question, and, you know, I mean, we are aware of that, but want to make sure that everyone's aware of that, that we can't.
Yes, we knew you knew.
Yes.
So, once you figure out what you want, then you can come back to the board for the town and say, we want to adjust our Common Victular and our outlaw alcoholic beverage license to reflect these hours, and it'll be a similar process.
Okay, great.
And special permit, but not us.
Yeah, it depends on what the special permit says.
Okay, sure, gotcha.
Mr. Seibert?
Northampton Restaurant right now, if I recall, has mimosas and beer available.
Yes, yeah, we currently have a beer and wine, year-round beer and wine license, and we're not restricted on any specific timeframe there in Northampton, it's open.
Champagne's a wine.
Champagne is a wine.
So, that's, yeah.
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 So, the thing that you would offer additional here would be the Bloody Marys, which would, you could not offer there.
Correct.
Yep, correct.
That's right.
And there might be other similar kinds of drinks that you find are appropriate for service during breakfast and lunch in those hours, and of course, you have the freedom to do that.
Certainly, yeah. It could, you know, the, the offerings within the context of the, you know, brunch beverages could expand, you know, maybe we want to use a Saki, you know, rice wine. You know, that's a different flavor, go in that direction, but the, the general, you know, the scope of the brunch cocktails, you know, that's just what we do, you know, seven to three, so that wouldn't change. We have no plans of changing that, that's, you know, the model that we're working on right now, we can, we'll plan to, to work on.
I have a traditional thing that I usually end up with being the one to do. My board, my fellow board members would be unhappy if I didn't say this, being a college, university, community, underage drinking is a problem. I was very pleased to hear the training and systems that you've proposed, because that really helps to address it, your experience in running this kind of an enterprise, the fact that Northampton has some of the same population, not quite the same percentage, however, as Amherst does. This gives you some experience at it. We just caution all license holders to be aware of that this is a problem of great concern to this community. We believe that responsible alcohol use is a very important part of the business community, and, but we also recognize that we look for cooperation and for our business community to work with us and our police department and our consortium with the university and college called the Campus and Community Coalition, to assure that we don't create situations that lead to unhealthy use of alcohol or illegal use of alcohol. And a little bit less concerned because of your business hours, that this is a problem, but I did want to at least make sure that you understood that this is a ongoing concern of this board, and I'm sure that when the new license commission takes over under the charter, that it will be no less of a concern to them.
Yeah, we can, we can certainly appreciate that, and we discussed this at length, having known the area and grew up here, that that was a serious concern for us and our business, which is why we chose to invest in a software-based, foolproof kind of checking, as opposed to simply a training with an ID book or so.
Yeah, it's certainly, it's, it's not an issue we take lightly, and we don't take lightly in Northampton, and, and, you know, as you've mentioned, Northampton is much less of a, you know, concentration of, so, you know, we're, we're just really being serious about it, and we expect the same level of seriousness from all of our employees going forward.
And I appreciate that, there's a last piece that I sometimes say, but I don't think I need to, because you just said it for me, is that these training programs, there's only good is the training programs and the, but it's the management, the oversight of management that really makes it happen, and I appreciate the spirit with which you've approached this, so thank you.
So, if there aren't further questions, or I don't presume there's anybody from the audience that wants to offer public comment on this particular thing, yes?
I was just going to say that actually, one of the reasons we go into that level of detail, even when we know applicants have experience elsewhere and clearly haven't had any violations elsewhere, et cetera, is for the benefit of the public who might be attending for that purpose, but it, as you indicated, it doesn't appear any, what actually came to the, which is probably a good sign, right? They saw that, and they said, fine, no problem, but just so that the public understands.
There's people from the public may want to comment.
Good.
So, if there are people that want to comment, this, now's your chance. So, just step to the mic if you could, and if you guys could just kind of make a little room, just introduce yourself at the mic and, and feel free to offer comment relative to this.
My name is Gordon Green, I'm a neighbor adjacent, I don't have any extensive comment, just that I'm glad to hear that there is a time limit, and I hope that the Select Board or whatever body reviews the hours of the alcohol permit in the future. Keep in mind the noise level of the neighbors, we're used to the harp, so that level of noise is, is something good, but it's something that is, I think, something everybody's useful, used to, but any sort of big deviations from that, I think, would be good to consider in future changes into the license. That's all I had.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. So, is there any other public comment relative to that? If not, then I'll, I'll close the hearing at seven-twenty-four. And so, if someone would like to offer a motion, Ms.?
I move to approve the annual all-alcohol license application for Jakes at the Mill, sixty-eight Coles Lane, Coles Road, Monday through Saturday, eight A.M. to three P.M. Sunday, twelve P.M. to three P.M. Christopher Ware, Director.
And there's a second? Is there further discussion?
It was my understanding it was ten A.M. on Sundays.
Yeah, is the Massachusetts law.
But, except it's not, because Mass, because Amherst has never, that, Amherst has never accepted that provision to start at ten A.M. on Sundays.
Okay.
And while other municipalities have, and some other licensees may forget that, on occasion, we have not at town meeting had to have accepted that provision, and we have not.
It could happen in the future under the council.
It absolutely could, under the council, that would be something for the license commissioners to look at and perhaps bring to the council and say, let's do this. It's one of those on-our-to-do-list things that has never gotten addressed.
Thank you for clarifying.
So, we're, we're sorry that that wasn't communicated effectively.
Surprise!
So is there any other discussion or comment?
I could hear you, like, quivering.
Yeah, well, I was just, wait a second.
So Northampton's done it, but we haven't.
Right.
Yes.
So all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So that's unanimous? Congratulations, good luck.
Thank you so much.
Will there be a better notices that you need?
Yes. If you would give those to our clerk, if you would be so kind to hand those. Mr. Steinberg? Thank you very much.
Great.
We'll record those, thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
They filed away. All right. We'll move to the next spot in our agenda, which is notice of intent to convert use of Chapter 61 land, Epstein, 37 Bay Road. Mr. Zomack? Mr. Burgess?
Thank you very much. I'm joined by, by Mr. Burgess, and also in the audience tonight is the Executive Director of the Kestrel Trust, Kristin DeBoer. If the board has questions for Kristin later, I'm sure she'd be happy to come up and answer those. I start a little bit with an apology. I was here last week with what I had hoped to be the last step in the acquisition process of this wonderful project down in South Amherst that I know the board is very familiar with, but for those watching in the audience here tonight and at home, if I could just tell those folks what we are doing, but through a state land grant and town meeting action, the town is proposing and is nearing completion and headed toward closing to buy about 30 acres of land in South Amherst. We are partnering, if you will, with the Kestrel Land Trust, a longtime Amherst partner, and the Kestrel Land Trust is, is buying the land outlined here, which is about 3.4 acres. Late last week, as attorneys got together toward, moving toward the closing, working with Mr. Burgess on some final details, collectively, they realized that a very small portion of the excluded land, if you will, was in Chapter 61. I know the board is very familiar with Chapter 61. I, I hope I am not becoming the king of Chapter 61. I, I don't want that title, but here we are. And so we realized that the Balderwood Trust, which is the trust that is, was formed by the Epsteins and is selling the bulk of the land for, for conservation to the Town of Amherst, and the 3.4 acres and change to the Kestrel Trust, needed to notice the town that a very small portion of land was still in chapter, and in order to clean this all up, it was decided to notice the town and come before you tonight. I want to give an opportunity, if it's okay with the chair, for Mr. Burgess to just say a little bit about that, or, you know, do you want to add anything to that in terms of your discussions with the attorneys?
Sure. My discussions with the attorney was with Mr. Spencer, and his original intent was to simply release the piece of the land, file a release on that piece of land, and after talking with him and myself, we decided that it would be better to release the whole property, because there are certain areas that cross over into each other, and there's actually an 8.3 acre exclusion on the original deed, or the original lien, and back when that was filed in 1981, we did not require anyone to split out the areas, just to say that they were leaving 8.3 acres out, where the house sits in the area around that. So to make it clean and make sure we had everything out, it was easier to release all liens at one time, and that includes the 17,000 square feet that Mr. Zomack's talking about on the 61 land.
So I just showed a context map, but I also wanted to provide the board and the viewing public with a more specific map, zeroing in on the 3.4063 acres that the Kestrel Trust will be acquiring, and the, the land in question relative to Chapter 61. So again, all of the 30 acres around the, the pond and the exclusion will be acquired for conservation purposes, and then this area will be acquired by the Kestrel Trust. And a very small portion of that outlined here, this 17,000 square feet, is part of the reason we decided to bring this to you, to simply clear this all up. Now, I realize this is a little bit out of our normal practice. This is the A&R Approval Not Required Plan that was reviewed by the Planning Board, reviewed by the Planning Director, the Town Engineer, the Conservation Commission, my staff and I, and I spoke with Christine Brestrop regarding whether, now, your normal practice is to have a memo from the Planning Board and the Conservation Commission. In this case, I felt, number one, we're moving very rapidly, our hope is to close on this in a few days, but the Planning Board has been involved, if you will, in this project. They, they understand what the outcomes will be. Likewise, the Conservation Commission has been around the table from the get-go. So this very small piece of land and this need to make sure that we clear up the title for this 3.4 acre site really was the genesis of why we brought it to you tonight. So my hope is that you would take the action to not exercise the town's right of first refusal, since our goals have been clear from the, from the outset.
Are there questions or comments from the board? Oh, nice. I think it's fairly straightforward, yes.
I think this falls under, if you tell us about it often enough, in enough different ways, we eventually say, "Okay, we're out of questions."
Yeah, just do it.
So I think we're, since we actually went over this quite a bit with the last couple of 61s we did, right? We're pretty familiar in the, in general area, so, anyway, so if, if there's not questions or comments for the, for Mr. Zomack or Mr. Burgess, then I think a motion would be in order, if someone would like to make the motion, under Section 4 of our.
I don't have to be the reader of it, but I can. I move that the Select Board not exercise the option to purchase granted to the town under Mass General Law, Chapter 61, to purchase properties located at 37 Bay Road and contiguous plots as identified by the assessors as all or part, parts of parcels, 25B-19, 25B-20, 25B-21, and 25B-59, containing 3.4063 acres, more or less a portion of the premises described in deeds recorded with the Hampshire Registry of Deeds in Book 4116, page 7.
Second. So we have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I hope to not bring this project back to you again. Thank you.
Thank you both. So I think we have some guests waiting for us, so I'm gonna hijack our agenda a little bit and move to the shade tree regulations, which are at the bottom of Section 4, which is F, because I don't, I don't think we have a lot of discussion there necessarily, but nonetheless, I think we do have a fairly clear set of actions to take. So do you want to?
Sure. I recognize that the tree warden is here, and he may join us. So at a previous meeting in July, you reviewed the shade tree regulations, but they were in a format that weren't, that wasn't in compliance with the way we were developing our bylaws and regulations, which you will see more in, in more detail when the Bylaw Review Committee comes to meet with you on Monday. So we, we edited slightly and put it in a different format to comply with the way the, the Bylaw Review Committee, for instance, we put the penalties and fees in a, what they call a data block upfront, and so everything is gonna, everything you will see will be in a data block upfront, so it's very clear what the penalties and fees right now, penalties and fees are sometimes incorporated into the bylaws, sometimes separate, so we want to be, we just want to provide some consistency. But typically, everything else was either part of the original bylaw that was proposed and which we, which the board determined wasn't appropriate for the bylaw, but should be part of regulations, and, or else it's, it's in here as part of the regulations, and we also followed the same numbering, lettering convention that they use. So that's really the only change that we made from previously.
So, so I will say, I know that some folks on the Public Shade Tree Board have reached out to me. I've not gotten back to anybody, so it's, it's, I've been, this time of year is an extraordinarily busy time for me, and I haven't called anyone back about anything, including my mother, who called me about five times in the intervening weeks since, since we saw this. But anyway, nonetheless, I wasn't intentionally ignoring you, just not having a, an opportunity to get back to you on that, and, and so, and in some ways, I didn't have much news until we saw this, and, and so we were waiting for this to be sort of retrofitted into the shape it's in now. The content was fine, which was the content of our conversation the last time, so I think we'll probably take it without too much exception. Ms. Brewer, did you have something to ask her?
Several, actually.
Great.
So, one question is more a matter of along the lines of what you explained about the formatting, so this is new to us, and this looks nice, and that's great. So how, what is the new philosophy associated with that in terms of how it's clear that there are regulations and there's a bylaw, and that those things live together or are connected in some fashion? Because lots of bylaws don't have regulations, and some regulations don't have bylaws. So how do people know there's both? And maybe that's something for the Bylaw Review Committee to talk about.
Yeah, we did not identify that. I mean, the, the bylaw allows for the regulations to be established, but there's nothing in the bylaw. We'd have to change the bylaw to say there have been regulations established.
I guess what I'm asking is more of a...
Tie them together.
Is how, you know, I'm not asking us to go back and fix the bylaw, because, that's fine, because there are plenty of bylaws, many, most of which don't have regulations associated with them. So I would just want that somebody who's looking at this, and this is, this is more a matter of how we're gonna file it, right? So that when somebody's looking it up online, or they're asking the office for it, they say, "Oh, well, I see the special town meeting action, but, oh, there's regulations, I didn't know that," or vice versa.
Yeah, so I think the Bylaw Review Committee has contemplated that. They have, as you can imagine, they've thought about this in a comprehensive way, and they want to put together one document, not even, not a printed document, but an electronic document, where you would hyperlink things, regulations, and you would find things like that, and they're formatting it so that it's easily readable online, and they want to put together one thing that includes everything, so people say, "What are all the bylaws and the regulations of the town?" You'd go to one site and find everything versus trying to hunting and pecking for them.
Sounds really terrific. More specifically, in terms of my notes from last time, I have a question here, when we were talking about fines, and so this is now in that data block right up front. It said, we were working under the assumption of 300, because the bylaw says 300, and suddenly it still says 500 in that data block.
Because the state, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it was just a, it's somebody's desire that keeps coming through the word processing without it actually being, as far as I know, legal.
Thing is, when we were a town, 300 was, I believe, the limit, but now that we're a city, known as the Town of Amherst, that limit may not apply. Now, whether or not, because the bylaw hasn't been changed, they may have to adopt it.
Bylaw hasn't been changed.
So that may set the upper limit, just because it's in the bylaw.
Have to amend the bylaw.
Right.
Right, that was a, that was a...
If it's, if it's legal, but I flagged out.
Okay.
My understanding is that that was desired, but was never actually true.
Okay, right. So I think that, that desire came through, so we should keep that at 300, the ankle by, a good catch.
Yeah.
Did you have more, Ms. Brewer?
I actually had one that I hadn't found yet, and maybe somebody can point me at it now that it's, we, I know we, we organized a good bit of this since the last time we talked about it, on July 23rd, but I had a note about the Mass General Law associated with 5-inch DBH, but I don't actually remember.
I think the goal was to move the definition of DBH earlier, which is the second thing into the definitions.
Yep, but there was also an inch requirement that also was a little confusing at one point, and just like we didn't really go from 300 to 500, I just want to make sure we didn't really change something else there. It's probably driving Mr. Snow crazy to watch me struggle with this, but...
You want to keep looking for it at a couple...
Yeah, I don't know where it is now.
Find it.
If you would, go right ahead.
I had, I definitely saw the 500 instead of the 300, but right at the beginning, because this, where it says, $90 per inch DBH, right away, I had no idea what DBH is, so I know we have it right there in definitions, but where it appears above, it should say diameter at breast height DBH, and then it'll appear again in the, because it's, the common reader can't figure that one out. And then, this is just like, critical root zone, also called, at the end of that paragraph or that definition, also called the root protection zone. I think the also, also called should be in the same sentence with the critical root zone. This is just, you know, I'm taking these in order, but not of order of importance. And again, in definitions, the first time I see APSTC, I don't know what that is, figured it out later.
Oh, that was just one I missed.
It's under gift tree fund.
Right.
So...
I just missed that one.
But more of substance, what I had near the end on, what's the, well, we'll just say the last page. F, hardship waiver reductions. If requested, the tree warden can consider financial hardship as a reason to waiver or reduce the removal fee. This is an issue I had, going back to when I sat on the Planning Board. If we're gonna have a hardship waiver, I want to know what the criteria is. I don't think any one person should decide, based on whatever, that that's a financial hardship for a person or a household. We need to have a standard, and we don't. And I raised this earlier when we reviewed this, and I still don't see it here, so I'm having trouble supporting this, because it's great to have a hardship waiver, but I want to know what it's tied to. And a little troubled in the next one. Three, appeals. Any resident or interested party may appeal these decisions. I want to know what the standing somebody needs to appeal. Like, I, I live across town, but I don't ever want a tree removed, so I can appeal? I just, that's really broad.
Can I follow up on that one without jumeling?
Okay, but can I just, oh, let me just, because then enforcement, the tree warden shall have the power to enforce these regulations and collect all fees and fines owed, but what happens to those fees and fines? So I'm assuming the way this is written, that the tree warden has some police power to enforce this, because it refers to it earlier on. If that's not really where the police power is for enforcement, we need to think about how that happens. And then, collecting fees and fines, we, we talked about this, so who actually tracks the money and what can it be used for? So it should just be consistent with the standards that we use for other things like this, when we have non-crimeal disposition. So that's what I found, and yes, you, you had one on one of those.
So my notes said, we changed it last time, that under appeals, it said, "Anyone may appeal these decisions." There was no definition of resident or interested party. My notes, it's crossed out, and it says, "Anyone may appeal these decisions." Whether that's true or interested, because that was a way of avoiding interested party, is it an interested party from Northampton, or is it an interested party from across town, or is it somebody that's in a butter? I mean, either it's anybody in the world, or those words have to, or words like resident or interested party need to be defined, because interested part, that, that should not be subjective decision.
So what, what do you want it to say?
That's why I said anyone. Clearly, that didn't make it through.
Look to sort of a more legal, what, who has standing to an appeal, like a zoning decision or a planning decision, that kind of standing to appeal, not just, "I didn't like that you did that, I, I'm gonna appeal."
Well, I think right now, it is anyone. Currently, it's my belief, it is anyone, and so if we, either we want to keep it being anyone, or we want to define who it would be, an interested party doesn't define that. I, I don't really care which way we go, I just don't want words that don't have meaning to be in here.
I don't have, I don't have a solution, I just saw it as a problem when I read it.
Yes.
I'm more concerned about making sure there's a viable appeal process for the applicant, and that's what I think my earlier reading, and you found your notes, and I didn't look for mine, is about if somebody doesn't like the decision of the tree warden, what's the procedure in making sure that they have an appeal, in this case, the appeal's heard by town council, so, but this looks like anyone who doesn't like it, whether it's, you know, keeping the tree or not keeping the tree, can intervene, which is currently true, which I think is potentially problematic. for mine, is about if somebody doesn't like the decision of the tree warden, what's the procedure in making sure that they have an appeal? In this case, the appeal's heard by town council. So, but this looks like anyone who doesn't like it, whether it's, you know, keeping the tree or not keeping the tree, can intervene, which is currently true, which I think is potentially problematic.
So, I think the logic is that trees are a public resource and that even though you may live across town, you may walk past this tree every day and so you may have interest in this tree as part of the landscape. So, I think that's the logic. It's not just a butters or a butters to a butters that might benefit from a tree. And just on the enforcement, this fits, there is global language on enforcement that they have adopted, that the bylaw review committee has adopted in terms of where the money goes, who can collect the money, the collector can only take the money, things like that, that will supersede everything that, that goes for bylaws and things. So, they've sort of, and that's why...
Okay, the bylaw...
The bylaw review committee, yeah. So, they've, they will, they don't, they didn't want to restate that in every bylaw that they reviewed. They just said, "Let's say, say that up front."
That's, that's...
And then, it's going to flow through everything, yeah. But it's, it's a good question, yeah.
Mr. Wall?
Yeah, I mean, I appreciate Ms. Kruger's question about the hardship clause, but I mean, as far as I know, we don't define it anywhere, really. The example I'm familiar with, for example, is the local historic district and the wording there is certificate of hardship issued when the commission determines that disapproval of an application would cause substantial hardship, financial or otherwise. So, it seemed to be a parallel thing, that in one case, you've got a commission in charge with administering of my law, and one case, you've got the tree warden, and that's the responsible person who presumably understands the law and will make an informed decision. I mean, that may not be the satisfactory, but that's what I've seen in other aspects of our government. So, I, is there any case for hardship? Is actually defined? I'm not aware of it. I'm not saying there isn't, but...
Have you had folks, had this...
Yeah. I, I'm not sure, but I know that, I believe LSC uses a standard to determine...
Financial hardship.
Financial hardship for waivers. I'm not sure if that's something we could use for this or not, but that's the only one I'm aware of.
The reason I feel so strongly about this is that you're really making a decision about a particular household's ability to pay without having the background information to make that decision. You might say, "Well, there's two professors who live there," but you don't know that they're supporting. It's just, it's, to me, it's a slippery slope and there should be an objective standard. I don't care so much what the standard is, but some kind of reference. We could tie it to what, you know, CDBG uses or LSC and pick something that's commonly used, that's a cutoff. But I, I worry that without that, it becomes quite subjective.
Well, we can see, search and see what other communities have done, if they've allowed for hardship.
And I brought it up before, but not...
I just missed it.
Still here.
Mr. Wall?
Can we also just flag that in for the whole bylaw review process? I mean, there's...
What hardship?
Can we flag that for the whole bylaw review process?
Well, yeah, I think that, I think it raises that specter across the board. I mean, Ms. Kruger mentioned...
I mean, explicitly direct their attention to that issue that's come up now in a couple cases.
Right.
There was an appeal, by the way, too. I mean, a case came before us involving a certain tree, right?
We've had a hearing here.
Couple of years ago. So, that part of the process, we're familiar with at least, even though it's not spelled out here in great detail.
Yes.
I believe that this particular appeal, number three here, comes from chapter 87 and it's relating to when the tree warden has told an applicant they cannot remove the tree. Not that they can remove the tree, but you need to pay these, these fines, fees. So, what is the appeal process when the tree warden says, "No, you can't take down this tree to, you know, fix your driveway"? What is the appeal process for that? And I think that's what this particular line refers to.
Building council.
The appeal process for someone who is requesting to take down a tree is already set, going to the select board or to the charter.
So, so to belabor the appeal process just a little longer, as talking about who is allowed to do that, and we talked about anyone and we argued about that a little bit. But when it says, "These decisions," which decisions, including the hardship waiver, the decision to prune, the decision to pull out, I would argue we need some clarity as to which decisions can be appealed? Because this section refers to decisions in kind of a generic way that might make things more complicated than we really want it to be.
Under requesting tree...
Last page.
Yeah, but it's numbered.
So, because it's under requesting tree removal or pruning, but it also includes the hardship waiver section, so that could be appealed as well. And maybe just saying, can, you know, may appeal a decision to remove or prune, you know? I'm just asking for that level of specificity, whichever of the things we actually want people to be able to appeal, not just like some, to be clear what they can complain about. So, for example, when they say, "We have many, many trees on this driveway that you want us to remove and/or that you want us to pay a large amount of money," which we have had that conversation already with particular, and then they say, you know, "Can that be appealed?" As opposed, can the amount of money that you're charging us be appealed versus the actual removal or the pruning?
Yeah, no, it does raise an interesting question because of the structure...
Yes.
...of the bylaw with principal sections A through F. Since the appeal section is a, under F, does, is it limited to F? The implication, it's a matter of general statutory structuring, would be yes. That the appeal only would be applicable to something that arises under that subsection, request tree removal or pruning. And I'm not sure that's what was intended.
Formatting error. A formatting error?
Well, it raises a question of whether there should be some general section, additional, you know, even a G, which is general provisions or something like that, that you then put appeals and enforcement under, so that appeals and enforcement applies to the entire...
Ah, right.
...bylaw and not, not by implication to just a section of it.
Right. It's unclear. Makes it vulnerable to challenge.
And I think that there are certain things that then become problematic because without doing something more, it will create the need for standards that can be applied. You want to make sure that the standards are the standards that are in the regulation themselves, because that's what we are trying to do. And by just giving the responsibility to a 13-person council, I think that they're almost going to have to, I mean, the first time this comes up, visit the whole thing all over again and create a process that they would apply to this, because they really don't have any guidance out of this as to how to apply it.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Kruger.
Well, just, I, I didn't read this until this afternoon and then I felt really badly because it was like, I can't really accept this without these clarifications that I've been talking about. And I was like, I would have, if I had done my job earlier, I might have called the manager and said, you know, "I, I think we need to do a little more work on this before we bring everyone in," because I...
So, can I just sort of summarize what I, I heard? Make sure we've captured everything? And so, DBH in the first line, $500 should be $300. Just as a standard, the bylaw review committee is putting all definitions up front. That's how they, that's their standard. That first paragraph, critical root zone, we're going to put a comma after diameter, lowercase a. The PSTC, the APSTC committee should be PSTC, but you'd like that spelled out along with DBH.
Actually, just to go back for a second. In that first paragraph, then, also called the root protection zone, could probably be a parenthetical phrase after the critical root zone, CRZ. It was, I can move all the way to the beginning.
It goes before a minimum of six feet.
So, critical root zone, CRZ, comma, also called the root protection zone, RPZ, comma, is a circle on the ground corresponding to the drip line of tree.
Got it.
I think it's where, that's my understanding of what folks were thinking about that.
Okay. I don't have anything on the second page. Of course, this is not numbered or third, but then we go to the last page and the things I have there is some kind of standard for hardship waiver, some research on that, possibly pulling out appeals and enforcement as a separate section. I'm rehearing that anyone can appeal a decision, but what decisions are we talking about? And then, verify that on the enforcement, the, the collect all fees and fines, where does that, make sure that that's covered previously, but we might want to say it explicitly here. Are there anything I missed?
No. I would suggest under the, any resident or interested party, I'd go with any resident. I think we should limit to residents. That would be my opinion.
Okay.
Because I think that's, you're saying it's a public resource for the town. I think then those, then if we're going to be broad enough to not say, you know, the...
Non-resident taxpayers.
What's that?
No, I don't care about that. Not taxpayer.
No, she, he's saying, if you say resident, then there, if there are people who pay taxes here...
Who own property, but don't, it's not their primary residence.
But they aren't residents. That's why, I know anyone sounded really loose, but I couldn't come up with anything else.
Maybe it needs a little, maybe we can tie it to something where we...
Or you can just use passive voice, appeals maybe.
Also, I would like it to be people over 18, because I really don't want a parade of young people coming through.
Just say adult then.
Yeah. Saying what?
Adult.
So, we have to sort of, you want someone, it could be, it could be any resident or property owner.
Mm-hmm.
Foreign students.
You know, age of majority.
Yes.
I don't want someone arguing that someone who lives here for three months is not a resident. I, it, it's just not worth it.
They are, because there's no durational standard in the state allowed. So, one day, you're a resident.
Is somebody going to say there is?
Well, that's, but they're going to lose.
That's why I'm not...
They're resident as soon as they have the lease or they pay an electric bill or whatever.
Right. Yes.
So, going, going back to number three, the appeal process, again, that is relating to the decision, I believe, is the intent that is decision by the tree warden to not remove a tree. I don't know if we want to have the second one being the appeals process for permission to remove a tree and paying the fees and the replacement costs. I think the, the applicant would be the person who would be interested in an appeal process who has denied permission. I'm not sure if the average citizen would want to appeal a no decision on a removal, but maybe they would. I'm not sure. So, do we want to have a, the second appeal process defined based on chapter 87's current definition of an appeal process?
If we had, if we could reference state law, it'd be nice.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll work on this.
Mr. Wall?
I just, maybe one question for the tree warden and then also a, a comment. Do you have a sense of what kind of removal fees one is talking about? You know, it says one can appeal to waive or reduce the removal fee.
So, it's a replacement cost.
Right.
Based on the size of the tree, essentially, the diameter of the tree. So, it can range significantly. It can...
I mean, in your practical experience, do you have any numbers or is that just...
There, it's not uncommon to be $3,000 to $6,000 to $10,000 if they're, if they're, they're taking down significant trees in the driveway.
Right. Okay. No, because, that's good. Because I, I mean, I appreciate Ms. Kruger's question about that. On the other hand, again, my experiences with things like demolition and, you know, so on the one hand, you want this sense of a metric, you know, not just, "I don't want to do this," because nobody wants to pay money for anything, if they can help it.
Right.
But on the other hand, like, what are you going to do? Ask for their tax returns? You know, I'm putting three kids through college and taking care of my sick mother and I've got debt on my car, you know?
Decide.
There, I don't think, yeah, I don't think there's anybody in any case in town I know of where people actually pro, required to demonstrate in the sense of, you know, your college financial aid application or something, what your, what your financial status is.
Our own version of that.
Because you get into privacy rights there, too. So, I think that's what, that's why a lot comes down to the reasonable standard of the tree warden.
Although, Mr. Wall, the CDBG program, I don't know if they're doing it now, but when they're, they were doing rehab loans, they would get waivers to see people's tax returns. There was a state requirement for a standard. So, I'm not saying we have to do it that way, but there is a way to do that. And it's not just people claiming, "I have these expenses," but there, there is a kind of cut and dried way to get, if they want the benefit, they sign the release and there is a way to analyze it. And then, your actual income is within the range that qualifies you for the hardship.
But that's to, to what? To get?
That was to get like a really low interest or deferred payment loan.
Right. But I think that incurring a debt and borrowing from the public funds is different than saying, "I can't afford to cut down a tree."
$20,000 in tree removal to relocate an unsafe driveway, I mean, it's irrelevant.
Yeah. No, I'm just saying that I'm sure there'll be people who concern about privacy, too. So, it's an issue worth raising across the board, but I'm not aware of a standard so far applied in other parts of appeals for, for town bodies like this.
Yeah, I do, I do have a, I guess, one thing to point out for the sake of inviting for clarification. E, subjects in E has four identified prohibited acts. The fees provision that's at the top of the regulations has proposed fees. We've raised the question about the $500 one for E1. E2 to E4 is $50. And are we intending that the appeal process cover those? And by having placed it under F, the implication is no, but then where's the appeal process if somebody is unhappy with the fee? And did we, was there a particular intent in your drafting to exclude an appeal process for those violations?
So, under noncriminal disposition, there's a separate process that stands alone and that would be outlined as an overarching thing. So, noncriminal disposition, you can appeal, but to the court, not internally. So, it's like basically writing a parking ticket, in essence. That's what the, the tree warden would do.
So, is it our intent to leave it? I'm just, this is the question for the select board, is our intent to leave it as Mr. Bachman just described it, which would then mean that we should actually leave the appeal section where it is? I think it's a clarification that we needed.
Further along those lines, aren't we glad we didn't do this back in August? Is, we still need to know, though, even if we say that the appeals process doesn't apply to two through, this appeals process doesn't apply through two through four because it applies to the noncriminal disposition. You get a parking ticket, you don't, you, well, parking ticket's maybe not a great example, but you take it to court rather than that you take it back to the tree warden. You know, you burned a tree, that goes a different path than going back to the tree warden and then select board slash council. But that doesn't address the issue of whether or not appeals associated with waivers can be dealt with. And so, that still needs somehow, whether it's layout or, you know, format, we need to figure out if people can appeal that, because otherwise, the way you got it set up, it looks like you can appeal hardship waivers. And, you know, if somebody makes one and then they're told no, then they can appeal that.
Appeal that, yeah, seems, yeah.
And so, maybe we want to, maybe we don't, but we need to be, we might think we know what it means today.
Right.
But what it means to other people six months from now is perhaps not entirely clear, partly because of that. And then, speaking of appeals, if we are talking about the appeals process that is in MGL 87, section four, which of course, as so many sections of MGL, has absolutely nothing to do with towns that will have our form of government, it says, "Cutting down or removing public shade trees, approval of selectmen or mayor." So, we can see we don't fit. But it says, "If at or before a public hearing as provided in previous section, objection in writing is made by one or more persons." That's it. Doesn't say it has to be somebody who lives in town, somebody who's 18, somebody who's nearby. It says, "One or more persons." And that is exactly the argument we have had, where the tree warden has decided, the tree warden totally, appropriately, of course, according to the select board, wanted to cut down some trees and one person said, "No, you cannot cut down those trees." That was the appeal that was happening and we had to have that hearing. That was the appeal that was happening, and we had to have that hearing under this provision. So if that provision still applies to our new form of government, because they don't seem to give us an alternative, then I don't understand why we would alter that, given that I don't believe our bylaw gave us some authority.
Right.
Which would have been checked by the AGO and all that.
So we can't...
To be different than, I don't, I don't see why we could limit it, when the, it appears, not an attorney, but it appears, that the MGL 87, Section 4, says who, which is, "By one or more persons."
So we may be stuck with that, we can't be more limiting than that.
So maybe we just adopt that language, and just stick it in there and be done with it.
One or more persons.
That's what the law says.
Yeah, okay.
Right. I think articulating what is or isn't appealable, sort of what that applies to is important there, yes.
Again, that's for the, when someone requests to remove a tree and the permission is granted, the appeal process would be for one or more persons, like you just read. But the other appeal in section, sorry, three here, that appeal again is just for an appeal to somebody who was told, no, they can't cut a tree down.
Right, but that's, it's not explicit enough, I think, because it just says these decisions, and that we should be explicit about what they are appealing, yeah.
Yeah.
Right, which two, so it sounds like we have two, and actually, three, if you count the hardship waivers, three different kinds of decisions that in theory could be appealed, but maybe we don't want to allow for the hardship decisions to be appealed.
This is my last one. So now that I've looked at it a bunch, on the prohibited acts, where we have the $300 for one, and the $50 for two, three, and four, I am wondering, number four, "Cause or encourage any fire or burning near or around any public shade tree." Should that be $50 or 300? That seems pretty dire. Or, if you have the fire near, but then you damage the tree and it triggers one, and then you get the 300?
So, I know in Chapter 87, the 50 is for noncriminal. 300 would be for a criminal intent, is my understanding of Chapter 87.
No, they're both noncriminal.
You don't have criminal power here. Noncriminal disposition. Your E1 and E2 through four at the header part.
Correct.
Anyone else think 50 is too cheap for putting a fire under a shade tree?
Would apply, but anyway, yes.
So they are, to be, to be clear amongst all of us, all these are noncriminal dispositions. There are no criminal dispositions associated with them. And then, the other question I have, and I don't know the answer to it, and I don't know if it indeed needs to be answered, because we, I know, talked at length, and Mr. Snow explained to us in great detail where we wanted to measure the tree in terms of height and then diameter. The note I had before that I was confused about, I realized in the new section, is under item F, requesting tree removal or pruning, item one, and it refers to a size of five inches DBH, which I am not seeing en masse general law, so I'm, either I'm missing it, which is entirely possible, or it's something that we are choosing to do because we think it's a better choice, which I am also fine with, but I'm just trying to be clear, that that was intentional, as opposed to the 300 and 500 confusion that we've been having.
It was, but...
So, it was intentional, and that's in relation to the replacement cost. So, any tree over an inch and a half is a public shade tree, but if it's five inches and above, that's where the replacement cost would enter.
So, just, we skipped over the burning the tree, the fire under the tree issue.
I think the determin, the estimate on that was, one, the, number one, which is the higher cost, or the higher fine, is where you actually are destroying, is kill or destroy any public trade tree, whereas you could have a fire near a shade tree, it doesn't kill it, but you don't want to be constricted to having a $300 fine on that. The other, you know, items two, three, and four are more endangering a shade, a shade tree versus killing it.
But if you had the fire, and then it did kill it, then you're in one.
You're in one, right, if you kill it, yeah. It, this doesn't say by, how you kill the tree.
We're not splitting those hairs, as it were.
So now, when everyone writes to the newspaper and says, "Those tree huggers," we know, we deserve this reputation.
Was it five inches or greater of DBH? Or not, so...
So we'll work on this and bring it back to you at future meeting.
So breast height could vary quite a bit.
Well, that's why they defined it at, what is it, four and a half feet?
Four and a half.
Oh, yeah, okay. I missed that. I mean, I...
Depends on who's who, but, so we'll take this up hopefully soon, but we'll just tidy up again from, each time we do it, we kind of, it's, again, the intent is not changing, it's just sort of those nuanced pieces that we run up against when we try to make it enforceable and, and a living document that, you know, regardless of who reads it and when they read it, it's functional for them, so tidy it up.
I appreciate that, and as I said in our earlier meeting, when we started this process, that's exactly why I wanted to bring it to you, because you see all these things, and it's really important, it'll make my job easier if it's very clear, and we know exactly what we're supposed to do, so I really appreciate your effort.
Those are kind of you, considering how we pulled this apart.
Right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. So moving on in our agenda to 4C, to go back to 4C, which is Select Board Budget Policy Guideline Process. Did I miss one?
I'm going to do the appointment.
I do number five.
What?
Oh, geez, oh, I didn't realize that, or we could have done that ages ago, I didn't realize someone was waiting, so since we're skipping around, we'll go to five, on confirmation of appointment of Shoshana King to Public Arts Commission. I'm sorry, I didn't realize you were here, or we would have done this hour, not hours ago.
You're sitting with the tree people, I think.
Yeah, yeah, I hang out with them too.
Yeah, she's on both.
Right. So, thank you for being willing to serve on the Public Arts Commission. I didn't know if, if Mr. Bachman or wanted to, you know, offer any comment or introduction to this at all.
Sure, so the Public Art Commission is below the required numbers, is, under the new charter, if, there are no appointments that can be made unless they are below quorum plus one, Public Art Commission is below a quorum plus one. We had one applicant, Mr. Wald and I interviewed her, and, and Mr. Brody, who's the chair of the Public Art Commission, and it's Mr. Wald for his, if he has anything else to add to that.
No, just, I know that also Ms. King has been attending meetings regularly, is very up to date on all the activities of the, of the commission, is really eager to get going, so we're happy to make this appointment and to give you the opportunity to serve officially, finally. Thank you.
That's it?
Yes. Do you have to do a motion? I didn't know if you wanted to make, do you want to make a statement relative to this, or, or you're welcome to, but you don't have to.
I'm excited to serve my community.
Great, thank you.
I did have a question, this is from Mr. Wald. Did, when I was looking at this, I saw there were two other people who had applied within the past year, was inquiry made to them as to whether they remained interested?
Ms. Mills, I'd actually started to schedule appointments, and one of the people withdrew, so.
Yeah, yes, so we did, and others weren't interested in interviewing at the time.
So this, we had three...
We actually had two scheduled, and one person dropped out.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So I would entertain a motion if someone would be so kind.
I move to confirm the appointment of Shoshana King to the Public Arts Commission for a term expiring on June 30th, 2019. And should we explain my way, so this is again, because of the charter, we're making these one-year appointments, and then the new council will take up further appointments and renewals and so forth.
Second.
So we have a motion as second. In, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And that's unanimous. Again, thank you very much for offering to serve.
Thank you.
And on the Shade Tree Committee too, for your volunteering to go to those meetings.
Sorry to make you wait. So, now that all the attendees have accommodated, I didn't, I really would have done that sooner. I didn't realize.
She was here with the shade tree.
She was with the shade tree.
Okay, good. So we'll go back to Select Board Budget Policy Guideline Process, and so I believe in our packet, we have our guidelines from last year, just as a frame for our conversation. We had a little bit of that conversation last time, and I'm sure we'll have a robust conversation about how we might want to approach this topic for the coming year, given the change in government. If I can just find it. Buried it too soon. It's under here. I buried it. Budget.
Fourth section.
Hand delivery.
What was that about, a paperless office and everything?
Ah, there they are, okay. Now I found them. So, in years past, we have taken a, a more hands-on approach, because we had that role and responsibility to, to lay out budget policy guidelines to the manager for the coming year, and, and I think, you know, we sit in, as is the case a lot of times, we sit in a sort of strange place relative to a change in charter, and we will continue to have that responsibility after December. But nonetheless, do and how do we want to offer advice, both to the manager and potentially the council, as to how they should proceed with the budget? I think there are some things under overall philosophy and key concerns, a lot of those are going to be, you know, the same, as I was reading through this, you know, OPEB is still going to be a concern, how we manage our debt, how we, you know, use our resources, how we interact with the three institutions of higher learning. So, you know, some of those kind of things, I think, are completely fine to reiterate publicly and, and, and offer again as, as comment on the budget process, but anyway, I'm open to hearing what people think.
So I have a suggestion.
Absolutely.
And my suggestion is this, so we talked, when we talked about this, we talked about, you know, well, okay, what's the purpose of the four boards meeting, given where we are differently, and we all agree that that's a terrific educational benefit to the entire community? And, well, will the finance committee be doing guidelines, and if they are, then, well, we want our shot at it too. At the same time, I wonder, one approach might be the following. That approach might include saying, here's the old document, not dissimilar to what we did with the town manager goals, that say, here's the old document, and here are the four things that Ms. Brewer is concerned about, and I'm betting there might be some others, that others are concerned about, that you, that you could be thinking about moving forward, rather than trying to rework each one of these paragraphs and say, well, should we tweak that one a little bit to talk about this, that, or the other thing? And so I will give you an example of my four concerns, that I think are not addressed fully necessarily, and some of them actually probably were addressed in the finance committee book for town meeting, but are not going to be clear to, are not clear to us necessarily, say, if we were just sitting here in a normal year, we don't necessarily know the answers to these questions until the town manager says, well, that was on page 53 of the finance committee book, or the big binder, and so therefore, it's not going to be useful to the council moving forward either. So, for example, on page two, under item M, it says, "This budget will be constructed without knowing whether the town will have chosen..." So rather than having to rework that, the second part of that says, "Any increases in expenses for the implementation of a new form of government should be identified." So there's election cost was one that was identified as a possibility, but the costs that we just talked about earlier tonight could be mentioned in a, in a paragraph, or you know, or referenced to a document, that's what those costs turned out to be, rather than trying to rework this paragraph. The one just after that, because I did say I had four, on the, the next item is actually directly below that, which is item N. When we wrote this back in December, we said, "Several town meeting actions in the past year will have negative implications for the creation of the budget for FY '19." So, what was the upshot of that, I think is going to be important for people to recognize moving into the next budget cycle. I'm not sure, and either we should figure that out now, or we should just say, you all should look at that as your, as the budget is being developed, because we need to be able to, we can probably come up with it off the top of our heads tonight, but it needs to be attributed somewhere. And similarly, on page three, there's an extraneous and in the first, in, in item B, which I know is critically important to all of us, but under item four, other new revenue, the other two that I wanted to bring to our attention is item C, service fees need regular evaluation to assure they are in line with costs. This has traditionally not been one of our strong suits, in terms of where, when we can report to people, well, the last time we looked at the things in the planning department was such and such year, and we changed three things, and we left all the rest the same, because we all know that we can't just jack up the price to whatever we want it to be, it has to be associated with the services. But to say, you know, we're on schedule to examine the fees in the clerk's office this year, and two years ago, we did the ones in the planning department, I think would be valuable to people, because this is the kind of thing people always say, well, have we done all that? It's like, well, we evaluate it periodically, and we don't ever seem to have a report as to what we've actually changed, that we can really explain to the public. And similarly, item E, is when grants involve funding of individual personnel, we need to clearly communicate a strategy for whether those positions will be continued, and we do have a waste reduction position, for example, that's partially grant funded, that needs to be accounted for moving forward, which I know obviously staff is doing, but I'm talking about understanding, you know, where choices will eventually have to be made associated with that, just like in the past, we've had to do with firefighter grants, or with, with police grants, or, or other grants, like when we've used block grant money, for example, for various people's positions. So those are just the kinds of things that people get confused about, I think, going forward, and since you're going to have a new set of people who are not going to know all the, I guarantee they don't know those things now, to be able to think about a way to express some of those things as the entire budget unfolds. I'm not saying they need to know it the first day they walk in, but the rest of these things, to me, and I'm sure some others have pulled out some other things, do feel very much like a continuous sort of focus thing, that doesn't necessarily need to be particularly updated for this year. Thank you.
Ms. Kruger.
There was another one that I, I'll get to in a minute. So actually, I, I don't agree with taking the same approach that we used in the manager goals. I, I think, maybe because I marked this up a lot today, I think this could easily be updated. I think most of it's the same, there's a couple of things that are just, aren't relevant or out of date. One, Ms. Brewer hit on. The other one was the rise in cost of health care and the health insurance trust fund resiliency, which is G, one G, and it goes to the second, top of the second page, that's a different situation, that also would need to be updated, along with the one about the town will have chosen a new form of government, which is M, Ms. Brewer mentioned that one, maybe by just keeping the second sentence, that's the update. So I think most of this is still, could be repeated as the FY '20 guidelines with a couple of updates or corrections. What I, what I did when I read it, this is really in the weeds, but some places, we say "we" and "are," and other times, we use, we step back, and the tone or the structure is more formal, so, you know, at the beginning, one, A, B, C, it's like overall physical sustainability, growth and stated, and then you get to E, and goes, "We support maintaining a level services." So we, the voice alternates between a statement and then a sort of sentiment or a position, and I tried to mark this up, I tried to take all the "we's" and "ours" out that I possibly could, to make it consistent in voice throughout, so that's something, it's more in format. We've already talked about a couple of the updates, and I, and I did a couple of other, like, the third page, three, economic development, B, it says, "Growing our property tax base", it goes, "Growing the property tax base," and again, I tried to make that consistent. So I, and I mean, I could be convinced, otherwise, I would opt for, you know, turning in our, our changes and, and maybe just giving this a brush up and using it as the FY '20 budget policy guidelines. I, I don't support the thing of like, here's the four things we updated, and here's the one from last year. I think that that's not as useful, but others might disagree.
Can I follow up on one particular item? So I freely admit that many chairs over many years have cobbled this together from things that we've said, and so... that we've said, and so the voice does change because it expressed the sentiment more than that we were concerned. And I actually like the we statements because they seem more user-friendly, but I get that that is not everyone's style. However, given that, we have facts like item C, okay, we're just on the first page. Item one C, Amherst relies very heavily on presidential property taxes as well as on new growth to fund town services. I mean, that's in some ways, just like, well, yeah, we all know that. So that's really not, that is part of a philosophy. Is it a concern? I don't know what it actually is. I mean, we've done our best with this over the years. But given that sort of statement, then how do you change, since you indicated that you marked this up, how do you change E when you're talking about, we welcome a short and prioritized list? Because that's saying, we, the select board, want to see that short and prioritized list. So how did you change that?
A short and prioritized list with rationale for budget additions, should funds become avail.
Those where?
Like, I just circled the two whys, but I haven't rewritten that particular one.
So my point being, I'm not saying you-
Should be developed.
For whom? That's my point. That's one of the reasons we end up saying it this way, is we welcome a short and prioritized list, because we want it back if funds become available. If you're just going to say, create a list, it's like, for who? To do what?
So in the past, in the past, it has been, that statement is a directive to the manager. Yes, exactly. Whereas-
This is more a message to the future, future body.
Right. In creating a new version of this, and we're trying to modify the voice of it, it has that kind of directive, we can't-
Who gives the list? To who?
Exactly.
That's what I'm asking you.
Right, no, exactly.
Because if it's not specific, then why do it, is part of what I'm asking. I mean, like, this, these are things smart people do daily as part of their job. And so if we're saying what we want out of it is a short and prioritized list, if they're, if we don't want anything, if we don't think the council should get anything, if we think people should just do their jobs because we reminded them that Amherst relies very heavily on residential property taxes, I'm not really clear.
Really, if you follow that, this is from the select board to the manager, it would be, the, implied, the manager should provide a short and prioritized list for, with rationales for budget additions, should funds become available, which usually we have. Like, if funds become available, I want to add another, I won't say one of our favorites, another trash collector, or whatever. So I think this is, for me, more grammatic. Who cares about, we welcome? Welcoming is, it doesn't seem to me to belong in here. It's a directive of, if more money is found, these are the first things you're going to find. And we've used that. It's happened, and the manager then says, well, I identified that as my next priority, should I be able to afford it? And then we kind of know that that's been signaled, and it's been funded from time to time.
Right. And the other thing is, I think, in, there are probably several places in here where we could, it's not necessary to write in a directive manner, because it's, he isn't reporting to us at that point in time. And so it would be things like, it's advisable that the manager create a list for, you know what I mean? It's partly to, you know, sort of frame it for the council to consider, as much as it is for the manager to consider. So I don't know if that's, but that sort of begs the question, I mean, that's, I think, why you suggested what you did, which is, here's what we did in the past, and here's some things amongst those that are still issues of concern that you're going to need to contend with. And so, you know, it sort of absolves us of trying to nuance those kinds of directives versus not, is the idea there. So-
Correct all the grammar, should be item one. Put it all in the same voice.
Mr. Steinberg.
Yeah. I raise a question preliminarily, after looking at the charter again, as to whether we ought to be issuing these guidelines at all. And I know it's-
We talked about that when we weren't here.
I know we talked about it, but when you look at, when you look at the, when you look at the charter, the charter indicates that the process essentially begins much later, and not later than March 15th, excuse me, that the town manager, town manager submits at least, call at least one public forum on the topic of the proposed budget. The forum is intended for the town council and the manager to present priorities, context based on prior year's budgets, revenue and expenditure forecasts, and other relevant information, and to solicit feedback from the public. There's really nothing in the calendar that's earlier than that in the budget process going forward.
What's the four boards then?
And I think what we're trying to do is to get a process moving, but the question isn't the for, isn't the presentation of the information and the creation of the information about the town finances. I think that's always valuable to do, and it's always valuable to give that context to the schools and to the libraries so that they can begin work on their budgets. But these, at most, are suggestions to the council about criteria that they might want to consider, because they, as a council, have March as the timeline to give to the manager. And this January budget, this is all written around the January budget that the town manager had to provide to the select board and the finance committee under the now former Town Government Act. In the new procedure, he has a later date than March 15th-
So we're done.
-to provide the budget altogether. So I think we need to be, I know I wasn't here, sorry about that, but you need to be thoughtful about why we're doing this.
We weren't unthoughtful. Which we were, when you weren't here. And one of the things that came up was, as we said, the four boards meeting. Another thing that came up was, I believe I phrased it indelicately, as, who's going to tell the finance committee, it's not their job to give out finance committee guidelines this year, because it's not, based on what you just read, not that particular section, but the whole theme of the transition period, I don't see that it's the finance committee's job at all to be putting out guidelines this year. That's separate from the four boards meeting, except they usually meet right, literally right after the four boards meeting to start doing that. But I don't think it's entirely appropriate for them to do that, but I'm not in charge of them. And so if they're going to still do that, then the question was, let's pull this out and see if it's something we want to do. One possible thing was my suggestion, Ms. Kruger had another suggestion of a different way to do it. I think no matter how we look at it, given the timing exactly that you mentioned, and in light of the finance committee's independent actions, that in light of the fact that the town manager said, he's still going to start working on the budget, basically in this traditional timeframe, even though the charter requires later timeframe, luckily, is that then this perhaps, given all those things, becomes more of part of these mythical, not-yet-existent guidelines for the future town council, as opposed to being our substantial directive to the town manager for the department head meetings he's having now and soon about budgets, even though he's not required to issue a budget in January like he used to be. He had given us, I had walked away with the impression that he would still be interested if we had something particular to say about that, given that he was still going to be starting those meetings. He wasn't going to wait until after the council was seated to start working on the budget. So given that, and given the talk we keep having about giving direction, offering our pearls of wisdom to the future town council, that that is more what this document is, rather than their traditional, we need to get this done so that he can have the department head meetings, so that then he can do the budget in January, and everything falls into place that way. So it's off-cycle, but is it a thing we can use? Because we don't yet have any things we can use to give to the council as something. That's more advice than it is directive.
Right. And I think that, you know, I'm resisting the urge to say we should just write a memo that says, you know, good luck, spend wisely.
Signed by all of us, and really big.
Thanks. But I think the notion of, what's sort of coming to my mind relative to your comments is that perhaps, in thinking about, you know, sort of a document coming to the, you know, from us to the council as advice, or here's things, you know, there's a section on, you know, financial policy and guidelines, and, you know, in the order of this sort of thing, in much the same way, we might write a section relative to evaluation of the manager. So those could be separate memos on different topics, or they could be one monster memo with multiple sections, but-
Right. Reserve funds should not be used to support recurring expenses. That's like one of our faves.
Right. Absolutely. And we'll pass that advice along, whether formally or informally, I'm sure. Mr. Wall, do you have something you want to-
I just wondered if the manager had an opinion as to what you'd like us to tell you to do.
Yeah.
I think we did talk about this last time, and it wouldn't, it doesn't hurt to have this document out there. We are following an earlier, a regular schedule for a lot of reasons, internal staffing, plus the schools need their number, and some concern about whether, when the council will have their ability to sort of focus on it. So I think having the document, I mean, all things, this document survives year to year. It doesn't take a whole lot to, you know, we would just wrap up this whole document. But if you said, we'd like to update it and clean it up for the next fiscal year, that's doable. Just, I just want to make two points that Ms. Brewer brought up. One about evaluating service fees. We do look at service fees every year. Part of the budget process with department heads is to go through the service fees, and we don't do a thorough analysis and a cost analysis of, are they in line with all the other communities? But we always go through the, all the fees and revenue collected by every department. And in terms of the position that you mentioned, in terms of grant-funded position, that position was funded specifically as a two-year position, and nothing beyond that. And if the department deems it to be a high need, they'll present that in their budget process, but it's not, it was advertised and hired as a two-year position, as a grant-funded two-year position. So we were cognizant of that for the position that you mentioned.
Was implied.
Mr. Steinberg.
As far as the finance committee guidelines are concerned, under the new charter provision, in future years, there'll be a budget coordinating group, as structured according to the provisions in the charter, which has some similarities, but not entirely. And it will receive the budget projections, and it's presumed in the way that it is written, I think fairly clear, that it's the one that's going to provide guidance to the schools and to the library about how much money they should assume for the bottom line as they develop their budgets, to submit back into the process, according to the timeline established by the charter. And I think that what is kind of lacking this year is that that process isn't in place. And so what is to happen to give that guidance? And I think that was the purpose of probably having the finance committee come forward with guidelines, and it's, but, you know, because I can't fathom any other purpose. As far as our guidelines, I think Mr. Slaughter has actually stated it well, because they're statements that really we're putting forward to share our expertise, as you indicated, and that the council will take that as appropriate, but that really falls into the March process that I described earlier.
I think we did refer to that in our discussion, and some are aware of that. I think it is an exceptional year. It's running in a different track. We may have feelings about we think, what we think the current finance committee should or shouldn't do, but I really think that's separate from whether we want to do this and how we want to do it. So I would like to separate those two issues. So I don't think this should be a response to, they might do something, and therefore we want to do this. I think, we think this is valuable, and we want to do it, and how we want to do it is our decision. And I'd like to just separate it from that, what they may or may not do, which they, we don't appoint them, they're not under our purview, and we might have opinions based on our different understandings of the charter, or we think their role is, but I think we should focus on what our role should be.
So I think moving ahead, you know, really, the question is sort of, you know, how do we want to frame this up? And I think that, you know, this document, as it stands from last year, is a valuable resource, certainly. So it could be, you know, part of what we give to the council as advice, as far as, hey, here's how we frame things up, this might be a valuable tool to you as well. Or you may want to take us, you know, they'll take a slightly different, you know, approach to it. But I do think, I'd love to hear how people think about whether we should write, like a memo relative to finance-related stuff specifically, you know, or not. I mean, I'm of a mindset that, you know, there could be a, either a component of a larger memo, or, like I said before, or a standalone memo relative to budget, and, you know, guidelines and suggestions for how to work with the manager in that process. You know, I don't know if that's how we as a board want to do that or not. Yes?
I think all of these alternatives are good. I mean, there's no right answer. There's no perfect answer to the best way to do it. I think we're just trying to figure out what's going to be the most helpful and the least amount of work for us. Because the reality is, we, and I just can't emphasize this enough, we haven't done anything yet that we are giving to the council.
Right.
And we're changing this over on December 2nd. And so in light of not letting the assumption that somebody's suddenly going to develop an extra 40 hours in their week to write all these things up, if somebody wants to volunteer to write a cover memo, or if somebody wants to volunteer to write a chapter about a thing, that's awesome. But at this time, what I'm, just, I mainly wanted to have us not do is to say, the council should somehow magically know that a year ago, the select board wrote FY '19 budget policy guidelines, and that, or placed that burden on the town manager to say, I don't know if you care, but here's what the select board wrote a year ago. So for, I don't really care how we do it, except I'm just really worried that we're not doing any things yet. And so if this is our first thing, and we just say, we have a new colored folder that this goes in, and, look, it's our first thing, there's your thing, and maybe we just keep putting things in it, and then as the things accumulate, we say, oh, we need to write a memo that ties why these five things are in this folder. But I just really feel like too much of this is becoming, oh, we could do it this way, we could do it that way. And then like, it's all, we're all going to be saying, so Mr. Slaughter, when did you spend 80 hours writing that book for them? And that's unreasonable. You can't, we can't expect you to do that. And so we just need to figure out a way, whether it's a folder, it's a memo.
Could we take this as it exists, knowing it's, some of it's outdated, and we don't love all, and put it in the folder, with the idea that maybe two weeks before that transition, under the direction of the chair, which could be to ask for help-
Right.
-there's some kind of cover memo that, or letter, that just says, here's what we've put in here, and here's how we think it might be helpful. And that's, you know, a framing tool, and it could be short, and this could be, you know, document number one.
Right.
And maybe the manager goals, because we kind of did our part for the three months, and then here's some other ones from before, so that could be document number two, if people agree.
Right.
Right? So we got two in the folder.
Where's our folder? We've got two done already.
We want a purple, purple folder.
I have several of those.
Gold trim.
Because we can all imagine these really elaborate, really cool ways we could have done this, and yet they are-
But you're right. So, okay, so that refocuses us, and it complies with, I think, Mr. Steinberg's concern, but we start to accumulate something, because we're not going to write chapter and chapter. It's not going to happen. Nice idea. And anyway, they would probably chuck it in.
Right. No, I think, yeah, I think that whatever we provide is something that- Right. No, I think, yeah, I think that whatever we provide is something that, you want it to be a good reference document, and wordy in the right places, but not necessarily just voluminous for the sake of being voluminous, you know. In other words, it has to have the detail at the sort of right places, so that when they refer back to it, it has what they need to know. But lots of it will sit and collect dust and may never get read, but anyway. Well, for me, that was helpful to sort of articulate that a little bit and kind of chew on that a little bit.
Painful, but helpful.
It is. And I knew it would be in some respects, but I did want to get some of other people's ideas about how to kind of approach some of that.
Shouldn't have marched it up.
Could we literally bring that folder, like we're having our yellow folders with us from now on?
Yep.
So that we can, even if we sometimes just want to write a note to ourselves
Right.
And stick it in, it's like our sign folder.
Right.
A folder that we could start to just put these things in.
Absolutely.
You could feel better at night.
How about the clerk would like to maintain that folder?
Maybe a videotape with each of us talking for five minutes.
A video message, yes.
That's right. Go down Amherst Wee Inn for two minutes.
I'm capsing.
That's right.
What I have so far for the contents are updated town manager performance goals and not updated budget policy guidelines.
We just did the FY19.
Right. Exactly. So I think I'll move us to the next topic on our agenda.
Is due.
Which is additional town managing appropriation, PBT, route restoration. What I was hoping to discuss with you this evening about this was what routes, what additions could be made to routes that were cut, what those would cost. And so I had gotten a list of, what, a list of, you know, add-backs that we could do, which totaled about $80,000 for, which would have added them back in the intercession timeframe, and some ridership numbers, so we could, you know, because obviously we only have $53,000 to work with. There are about $80,000 in costs. I was going to sort of try to frame that up a little bit. But on Monday evening, when I was going to work on that and then send it out to you all, I had received an email from PVTA saying, UMass Transit is not able to hire enough drivers, so they're going to, they're going to actually make additional cuts, just because they don't have bodies to drive the buses. And so some additional reductions in service are going to happen on top of what has already happened. And so I spoke with the administrator of PVTA yesterday a little bit about it, and was asking, you know, they're hopeful to be at a more full staffing level by the second semester. They're, you know, they actually, one of the great things about the UMass Transit is they actually train the drivers. They get them the CDL license that allows them to drive the buses. And those classes take about six weeks to get through. They've, as a result of this shortage, and it's actually, it's a shortage kind of system-wide. And I think other transportation authorities in other parts of the state are struggling as well. You know, one of the things that UMass has done is to boost the base pay to, I believe it's $14 an hour is what they're going to pay as the starting salary. And then every semester you drive, I believe you get another quarter per hour raise, which is a pretty significant raise, if you think about it. But they are, quite frankly, shorthanded, and they've been sort of patching together as best they can, literally pulling people out of other work in their facility to do this. And they can't, you know, they've got people that maintain buses that can drive and have been covering some shifts and that sort of thing. So there's actually some additional reductions in service that are going to happen this fall. So one of the questions I ask, because if that's the case, and they're running less, then they potentially have a little gain in the budget. And, you know, because they're not expending, you know, gasoline and those sorts of things to drive those routes. And so the question I posed to the administrator is, well, with the savings from not running those routes in the fall, plus the money that we have, could we potentially, you know, restore, once you get to full rider, full drivership, I guess would be the best way to, you know, full employment for the shifts, you know, would we maybe be able to cover completely the restorations of those routes that we were talking about? And it's not a complete restoration of those routes. It was, you know, adding on to, it was adding the evening routes that get cut off is primarily what those add-backs would be. You know, some of the differentials in what they call headway, which is time between the cycles of the buses, those are a lot more complex and difficult to change, because, you know, a driver runs one route, and he runs another route. And so you relace those things together in such a way that to change those headway times between times at a stop is a much more complex process. But to add another one on the end of the day, or a couple of, you know, cycles through the route at the end of the day, is a much more clean sort of addition. And like I said, that added about $80,000. We have a little over $50,000 available, you know, to the manager for restoration of routes. If the savings from the additional cuts that they're making could augment that, we might able, might be able to get to a sort of fully restored, or a more fully restored system for the second semester of this year. However, they do have to look at whether or not that would create savings or not in some respects, because there's additional training expense, there's additional driver expense. You know, one of the big partners in this is UMass, and whether, you know, if they're not, you know, getting the service that they were committed to paying for, are they going to pay, you know, are they obligated to pay the full amount if it's for services not being delivered? So there may or may not be, you know, sort of money available. So they were going to check on that. It's going to take a little bit. There is a meeting of the PVTA next Wednesday. Hopefully I'll have answers about some of those things. Certainly if I get answers relative to that question of whether there are sufficient savings, or that savings in combination with ours might be able to do a more complete restoration of some evening routes and that sort of thing. I'll share that out with you guys as soon as I know it. But, so I'm really kind of disappointed that I have to come in and say that we're actually going to have a, you know, even further cuts. And again, it's not because of money not being available, but about the resource of drivers not being available. So they've been, you know, very actively pursuing new drivers and trying to get more folks to drive, but they're just not going to be in a place where they're going to have them in-house and trained fully until second semester. So that's the sort of status of where those things are at this moment. I want to make you aware of that. And like I said, if I, we will, however, though, you know, again, the process of sort of altering routes has a long lead time in advance. And so if we are going to, and to what extent we might, do some route restoration, we'll need to be pretty firm about what we're doing around the middle of October. Because they, they run, and we have a meeting right in the middle of October, and so hopefully that timing will work out pretty nicely. But the manager will have to, you know, execute a contract with PVT for those services. So again, it's, you know, it's advice to the manager from us, which we have to do in a serial way, as opposed to doing it where we express opinion to each other through email and that sort of thing. But like I said, as soon as I have more information, I'll share that with all of you about what's possible in regard to that. I will say anecdotally, that one of, besides the economy being very good, which means other jobs are paying well, and so students are making different choices about where they work and that sort of thing, one other thing that was mentioned, and again, it's anecdotal, I don't think they crunched the numbers on this, but, you know, one of the things, if you drive a bus, and especially if there's federal money involved, is that there is drug testing involved. And with recreational marijuana being legal in the state, they think that that may be a factor as to why some are not choosing that as an option. Don't know if that's real or not, but anecdotally, they don't know. I mean, but that could be, you know, who knows what sort of numbers that influenced. It could be one or two, it could be 10. I don't have any idea. But it was an anecdotal sort of thing that they shared, which was interesting. But anyway, so that sort of is the story on that section of route restoration at this moment. We're still sort of figuring it out. But I think there's possibility to do some. Exactly how much is going to be a little dependent upon, you know, what the current, the current further reductions, you know, and how they impact the budget, and what it'll take to bring those back and potentially add to the routes. So not the best of news there, but anyway. So anything you wanted to add on that or know about that? Any questions for anybody on that topic, or concerns about that? All right. So next item in our agenda is the, is charter transition. And I think we kind of, in some ways, covered a little bit of that with our last conversation about the budget policy, because it's sort of, you know, kind of covering that. I didn't know if you had anything else you wanted to share with us that has come up, or that you want to express to us.
Just to note that Monday, the Bylaw Review Committee will be here with a, not to show you their work, but to show you how they're approaching their work, and sort of looking at a broader context of how everything fits together and how it's going to be presented to the public. We're really fortunate to have this committee of people who are, you know, former town administrator, former town council, who, Mr. Ritchie, who does this for a living, and just highly organized. So I think you'll be pleased with their approach. Give them feedback if you think they're going the wrong route.
Something to offer?
Yeah, Mr. Bachman is going to be annoyed with me. And I'm going to go ahead and say it anyway. So we talked about last time, the events of, the potential events of December 2nd, and being held in the afternoon, and we talked about all the various conflicts and holidays starting, et cetera, et cetera. And I know that strangely enough, just voting for a charter did not mean that we suddenly had additional staff members who had time to plan all these things. But I wondered if we'd made any progress or had, in terms of anything we could report to people, or have people start thinking about saving the date associated with that, if we know where we might do it yet, or if any of our partners have offered us their spaces, or...
Not yet.
Okay.
But
It's still a theory.
But we need to do it soon, so people know. Yeah, I get it.
Because that brings us back to the point of, you know, we have in this beautiful tiny point type, which I really appreciate that we use, so that we could actually fit it all on the page, because it really is one, two, three, four, five, six, seven meetings.
It's actually five, realistically.
That we have left, because I didn't even count the December 3rd.
Once the foreboard meeting.
One of those is the foreboard. That's right. Exactly. That's the 18th, yes. So...
So should we make a note that where it says Monday, December 3rd, then in fact that might be
That's not...
Sunday, December 2nd.
Yeah. Or Saturday. We may do it Saturday.
Because we can't do it after. We swear people. So that won't really quite work, will it?
Right.
Yes. But if we need to...
Sunday afternoon is less of an issue.
I'm sorry. If we are going to actually inaugurate people on the 2nd, as we talked about, and some rather glorious plans that we were just theorizing about, that...
It's kind of like our transition document. It's kind of in that same...
Sounds like a good thing.
It's sort of nebulous, I believe is the term.
That we, then we obviously, you know, we would do, if that happens on the 2nd, because it has to happen before noon on the 3rd, then if we do need to be planning on Saturday or, you know, 10 minutes before the inauguration meeting, we should just sooner rather than later, because it's odd timing.
Oh, could we say that maybe at our next meeting, which will be Monday, that we'll have an update on this issue?
Sure.
That satisfy you? I know you want it now, but...
No, I realize that there's just so many hours in the day. It's just, you know, if we run into somebody from a particular institution and say, so when you given us that space? We could do that. We could help.
No, I don't think it was necessary that way. But more will be revealed soon.
Okay.
So we will definitely discuss that agenda setting tomorrow. So
Yes.
Is there anything else anyone wanted to offer or add relative to the charter transition?
I have a subject that's close to it, but one of the things we wanted to do before we concluded our life as a select board was to approve all of the minutes that have accumulated. And our staff did produce drafts and sent them to me. I did one of them, and I said, I am going to go into a process where I am committing to do one a day to get them done. Then I got very sick the day after I said that.
See, don't say that again.
So as we know, I was then literally out of commission to do anything for a period of almost a week. I think that my request to all of you is that we actually change the process and divide up the minutes amongst ourselves, so that each of us take responsibility for two or three sets. And because the purpose of going through it is to review the minutes and as they're drafted, and hit upon the obvious errors or corrections that should be recommended, and then get them back to the committee. I mean, it's not the final review. It's never been taken to be the final review, but it sort of gets rid of some of the things that, like appearances of who's before the board and things like that. So I think that my request at this point has to be, as a practical matter, if we're serious about the minutes before transition, that we need to do something other than we've been doing. And I apologize for that, but I just think it's realistic.
Certainly, you know, I think that's a fine idea, and if you are, I don't know how many sets that you have that have accumulated.
So the...
Certainly, I think doling them out is fine.
So the process is, you know, we get a draft. I review the draft. We send it to whoever, to the clerk, who then reviews it and sends them back. We format them up if there's any changes, and then get them to here. We have about half a dozen that are ready to go to the clerk, which I've held off on sending. But if you want me to divide those up, that's certainly doable, if people are wanting to take that task on.
There was a whole group of them, I think there was maybe 10 or so sets that you had previously sent to me.
You may have those in your, we have a list. We'll look at the list and see what's...
Yeah. No, I have them all accumulated in one point in my hard drive.
Yep.
Which doesn't do any good if they're not getting looked at and reviewed.
That makes sense. And of course, because it's my assumption that if we don't get it done, which of course is not an option, but if we didn't get it done, they would just become the minutes without us having approved them.
Drafted, that's right.
And that's just the way it would be, just like right now, if somebody asked for them, which of course no one will. And, but in the meantime, any that you assign to me, I have to have a hard copy. I can't do it electronically. So you'll have to print something out for me, because my brain just doesn't work that way. And so if you want to stick them in my yellow folder, right, for Monday night, or put them in my packet for Monday, that'd be fine. But unfortunately, I don't have a good enough printer, and I can't do it electronically.
Does anybody have any favorite years?
Let's randomize it.
Well, we should probably keep, you know...
It should be a meeting you react.
Series together.
So like, if the person wasn't at that one.
But rather than like, you know, every other, right? You should probably cluster them.
We'll try and do that. Okay.
I can go over the list with Ms. Mills tomorrow. And
Good idea.
If they're not easily findable elsewhere, they're easily findable by me now, and they're probably easily findable here, too.
Yeah. There's some, I think what we did is, we have the list on what's outstanding, what's in my court, what's in the clerk's court, and which ones have been approved already, and which ones have been posted on the website. So we sort of have these different check marks along the way for each set of minutes.
So we'll end up with something like this on our agenda with minutes?
Hopefully not. Hopefully we'll do a few every week, but there's some, there's a fair number outstanding. And we're building some every night.
Right. Right. All right. I think we'll definitely tackle that by a divide and conquer method.
Okay.
If we can. So I believe now, what's left here is, before we get into town manager reports, select board member reports, is the consent calendar under Section 7. So if anyone has any particular item within the consent calendar they want pulled out, or if they want to offer a motion, whole thing, or, yes?
So I just, talk fast and get it over with. Seven-hour receptions. I'm not grasping why they suddenly need to start running seven-hour receptions at the Fine Arts Center. Because to me, that sounds like what has traditionally been a beverage or two before you go into the show. Beverage or two when you have the pre-meeting with the artist, then you're going to have an after-meeting with the artist, and you're keeping people out drinking at midnight after a show. I'm willing to sign off on these, but I'm starting to get a little uncomfortable with that level of hours.
So I think the university is trying to get ahead of the curve, because these are all for 2019.
Sure.
And they don't prob, I'm guessing they don't know the exact hours, because they just know they have the date, and they're putting this bracket of windows from 5:00 to midnight, saying, because it's going, it could be 5:00, it could be 8:00, we don't ensure, so let's just put a bracket on it.
Could the minutes reflect that somehow? That that's what we're working under, that assumption? That it's not that we're encouraging the Future License Commission to give out six-hour special licenses once or twice a week, every week in the spring? I think that would just make me feel... I think that would just make me feel better, that like, we're not, we're not setting a precedent, but we are trying to help them in terms of realistically getting their scheduling done.
Yeah, and I think that they, we've actually asked them to expedite all of their requests to us, just to get as many licensing done as early as possible, just to.
Not have to.
Whatever the License Commission is doing, so they're not struggling with this.
So, yeah, but if we could just have our minutes reflect something along those lines that we assume it's a windowed, but not that they're actually serving alcohol for seven hours straight, those events, that just seems unlikely and perhaps not, and perhaps untoward, or something along those lines.
But were there any particular ones that anyone wanted to pull out for special attention? And if not, then a motion relative to the consent calendar would be perhaps advisable?
And I appreciate the effort staff went to, to make it clear that it was to midnight, not 12:00 PM, not afternoon. That was difficult, too.
Backward in time.
This is so much work.
Oh, exactly.
For people to get all these details, so thank you everyone for that.
I was thinking about doing something like, I moved to approve the consent calendar from the September 12, 2018 agenda as presented with the understanding that the hours as listed are preliminary and tentative, because, actually preliminary and tentative would probably be sufficient, unless you want to add something more for a reason.
Whatever makes it clear that we really would not be fond of the idea of seven hours at a stretch, week after week like that, but not that they have to come back. So I'm not expecting them to come back and say, no, this one's 4:00 to 6:00, and this one's 5:00 to 8:00, and as Mr. Bachman referenced. But whatever makes that clear, everybody is fine with me.
Want to nuance that some more, Mr. Stenberg?
And then we could add something to the effect that, again, move to approve the consent calendar type September 12, 2018 agenda as presented with the understanding that the hours as listed are preliminary and tentative, and the actual hours will be less than listed.
I like that.
Yes.
The perens, watch the tape.
That works.
Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. So I believe that takes us to the Town Manager Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the first thing is, one note that the, today, the UMass Board of Trustees Committee on Administration and Finance met and voted to move forward on, they received a presentation on the request for interest that the university issued back in June of 2017. At that point, the university received about 10 responses to that. Most of the responses were of the residential in nature, and the university has reviewed them and has gone to the trustees to get permission or guidance to move forward on the next step, which would be to issue an RFP, a Request for Proposals, for two particular projects. The first is, is to replace the North Village Apartments. Expected, it would be an expected phase-in at the existing location. This has been noted to us that this is a high priority for the university. The housing up there is, needs serious intervention, and they would look for a developer who would come in and work on North Village Apartments. The second is undergraduate housing. Now, the university has completed a housing demand analysis, which identified a need for up to 1,000 additional beds, mainly Studio 1 and two-bedroom apartment-style units. They voted today that, to move down this path, using, utilizing the public-private partnership method for financing this. The university will do additional analysis and expects to have responses to the RFP by January of 2019. The campus master plan, the U3 report, and the demand study all point to potential development in the southern part of campus along Mass Ave. And it's probably obvious to everybody that this is the big parking lots where the visitor center is, and that's the parcel that everybody points to. It's where undergraduate students have said they prefer to be living near campus at that location. It's an area that has been underutilized by the university. And so this is where they would conceptually look to put 1,000 units of student housing. They alerted us, they alerted this meeting to us, the fact that this meeting was taking place earlier this week, and they met this afternoon and voted it. And so that's all the information I have. There are no proposals for actual housing, heights, distances, anything like that. What they hope to do is to say, we need 1,000 beds in this unit, in this area, 1,000, give or take. We, there's some graduate student housing, the Lincoln Apartments, they may incorporate in, they may not. We expressed our concern to them that we know and hope that, when they do the RFP, that they take into account the neighborhood. That is always impacted by development in this area, and also the impact on downtown businesses, depending on what they include in the RFP, if they want to include commercial aspects or not. So there's, I think there's always been interest in having the university step up and take some more responsibility for housing students. They feel there's a demand. The other thing I think they feel is that this gives them some ability, swing space maybe, to renovate some of their other housing units. It gives them the capacity to, as people choose other, you know, dormitory-type buildings, they can then go into another dormitory and build on that. So that's the basic information I have on that. It's important information. It's a big step forward. The fact that the trustees are supporting it, it's in line with what they have done at UMass Boston and UMass Dartmouth, and I think they're following the same path here.
So if we could, since we knew this was going to be a big, exciting thing, right? And we've been waiting since a year ago to hear more about it. Just in terms of some of the things that we've talked about before associated with that, I really appreciate you mentioning both the downtown and neighborhood, because the neighbors have talked about that at the various other meetings we've had at UTAC and different other meetings, and how that might impact them. And so I appreciate you bringing that to UMass's attention again. And then in terms of public-private partnership, you know, we've talked about this for decades in terms of being able to actually do this. And the idea would be, under a public-private partnership, that we would receive tax revenue from the, or, I mean, what's the basic, when we tell people what this means, now that it seems like it could actually happen because it's happened at UMass Boston and UMass Dartmouth, what does it mean to us other than more beds will be created? It's not the same as when they built the North Apartments, for example, which was just an expansion of housing on campus.
I think we may have different opinions about what it does for revenue, and I think that's something that we will need to work out in it. We believe if it's private enterprise doing something on campus, that it should be taxable, but I think they, we will have to have that conversation with them.
Thank you, because then it's not, there's not a bright line, apparently. We believe there is, but they may not agree that there's a bright line.
They have a different bright line.
There may be bright lines, but in different places.
Any other questions relative to that?
Well, I was just going to add, and in spite, you know, sort of not up to speed, but from my days on the Board of Assessors, I know that just the fact of it being on campus property by itself is not the determinant. So I'm sure those conversations will happen, and the back and forth of all of that, and it's clearly important to us to have it filed in our favor, meaning more revenue. But just the fact of the land isn't by itself, my understanding, the determinant. But if Mr. Burgess were still here, I'd put him on the spot.
And then, when they said they're looking for responses to, you know, the next stage and their analysis of January 2019, so if in theory they get a good response, I believe you said January 2019 for response to RFP. So that's really just a few months away. And so when they, when people respond, you know, what were, what was the impression the trustees were left with in terms of, so therefore that means that we might have 1,000 new beds, you know, by 2020, or 2022, or?
So I'm actually, from my notes, I'm not clear whether the RFP goes out by January 2019, or if it's, so I just, I need to clarify that, or. But I would say that of the responses that they received to the RFI, the bulk of them were for residential, that, you know, they had put out a lot of different things that they were searching for, but hotel kinds of things they put in the RFI, but the, most of the interest was on residential, and that's what they responded to. That's where the market was.
But did they give the trustees any impression today of, and then if we continue to get good responses on residential, we would then, the idea would be that the borrowing would happen in 2022, or 2020, or 2050? Do we have any idea?
They met at 1:30 this afternoon.
And they didn't report?
I just said, just text me when the meeting ends, and if they vote a yes or no. And they voted yes.
So it's unknown, and that's okay.
Yeah.
It's just, that's different than, it's going to be a year from now. Yeah.
I think there's a lot of planning, because it's just a concept at this point, saying, we want to put housing here, and then there's going to be a public process. We want them to have it engaged with us in a very public process, and we've asked for that, and they've heard us, I think. So, other things. This weekend, Electrify Amherst is having their event, which is that, to paint some utility boxes downtown, so on Saturday, all day, you can go and watch people paint utility boxes. The Marijuana Review, Town Review Team, I don't know, remember the name, we came up, we settled on, had its first meeting today to sort of scope out how it wants to move forward in terms of the recreational marijuana recommendations that it's going to make. And Kruger represented the board at that meeting, and it was a pretty efficient meeting, and got some good things laid out. There are two public meetings scheduled for recreational marijuana. One on September 26 at 6:00 PM at The Hanger, and one on October 1. Don't know at, hasn't the time, probably 6:00. Location to be determined for two recreational marijuana producers who have to have their required public outreach meeting before they meet with the Town Review Committee. So those are the two things coming up. The, just to let you know, we've received bids for our property and casualty insurance, so we're reviewing those bids in hopes that we'll be saving the town and schools money. This Friday, the First Responders Picnic, so our DPW, police and fire, along with university and Hadley, first responders are invited to a complimentary luncheon in North Amherst, and sponsored by The Chamber, and a number of other sponsors as well, which we really appreciate. And it's their way of saying thanks to all the people who are putting in extra effort and are the first ones on the scene of any kind of natural, natural or person-made disaster. The Bid Block Party is a week from tomorrow night, September 20. Berkshire Gas came in to us, I'm not sure if I reported this last time, but they, on the day of the meeting last, last week, they came in and basically said, there's no expectation to provide relief from the moratorium for the foreseeable future. And they're going to be starting a ad campaign saying, there's nothing we can do, we need our pipeline, or else we can't expand our supply. And so there's clarity on that, but they don't have a backup plan, so that was pretty disappointing. The, going to have a cup of joe with the police chief at Share Coffee this Friday, September 14, from 7:30 to 9:00 AM. And that's pretty much it for my report. If you have any questions.
Question about the community outreach meetings, as we've known before, those are just something the companies are required to hold, and we find out about them, because up until having the Marijuana Review Team, we, they, they're required to meet certain state requirements, but they haven't been particularly effective at communicating with the town that they're doing them. And I know that was one of the things that was talked about in the guidelines for the Marijuana Review Team. And so are we now able to put a little more influence on them to get that information out more to our community, since we have a wonderful town calendar, for example, that they could themselves submit to, right? So it's not just that a staff member has to do it. They could submit, just like so many organizations do to community events, because it's not a posted meeting. But it's just one more thing, the way that people would see it, because we all know people don't read legal notices, so.
Right, and I think, you know, there is some influence, the Economic Development Director, who's our lead on this, has been advising them to not do it on Friday at 5:30 before a three-day holiday weekend, that that's exactly at a location that nobody really knows how to get to, even though it's a public space.
Yes.
To have it in places where people know, put it at, we felt like, I think the committee felt like 6:00 generally was a decent time, because it could be, it would be after work, but if businesspeople were around, they were still here. If you were on a board or committee, you could still attend and then attend your board meeting. So, and trying to do it on a day of the week that was accessible to people.
Sounds good. Thank you for, again, allowing staff to make that extra effort, so that more community knows about it.
Yeah.
Any other questions for the manager? If not, we're on to Select Board Member Reports, and I gave mine earlier relative to PBTA. That was the main thing I had, as far as news and notes. Does anyone else have some things to offer relative to their liaison work or other?
I'm just about the minutes, so I'm done.
Well, Mr. Bachman reported on the Marijuana Proposal Review Group, whatever it's named, and we had about a 40-minute meeting today to get going, and Mr. Kravitz has distributed the proposals, and members will go to as many of those outreach, required outreach meetings as possible, and if we can't, we'll get that information from Mr. Kravitz, and also the applicants have to report on those meetings. So it was good, and the next task is to read the proposals and work together on some questions, because each applicant will also have an interview with that group, and then decisions, recommendations will be made to the manager. So we're at a pretty fast timeline of being done by early October. I don't remember if we picked an actual date, but intent is to get this done. There were six proposals to look at, and so that was good, to get going, kind of a defined chunk of work. My other update, member report is the Downtown Parking Working Group met this morning. They hadn't met during the month of August. Ms. Brestrop, Planning Director, came and presented the three concept plans for the North Common that we talked about and discussed last time in a somewhat similar Select Board. There was a variety of opinion in that group, not one consensus opinion, and I think some of what was said would be communicated back to the design firm, Weston and Sansom, saying, you know, take this from that one, take this from this other one, you know, nobody would you know, take this from that one, take this from this other one, you know, nobody liked X. So I think some of it was similar to what was said here, but they did make that stop or that was, it was presented to the parking working group and they were appreciative of that. And the other update is that there are, I think, four proposals have come in for the parking consultant that will be helping to update the parking data study and make other recommendations on how to better manage our parking system. And I think there will be three staff members and two members of the downtown parking working group and that will be Christine Gray-Mullen, our chair, and our vice chair, Catherine Porter, will be the two representatives from downtown parking working group, sitting with staff to review proposals and make a selection so that that can get underway as well. So I think that's all I mean, definitely lots of meeting notices and scheduling coming in. Tomorrow, the municipal strategy subcommittee, CCC, is meeting first of the season and then the campus community coalition is scheduled to meet next week on Yom Kippur. So, but everything's starting and sort of feel the pace of September.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
You didn't have anything else besides minutes? From that side of the table, I've reported on mine, did you have?
I was just going to mention that I appreciated the firefighters, including the community, in the 9/11 ceremony on Tuesday. We really appreciate their holding that and welcoming the public to it. It's a small and brief ceremony, but it's always very meaningful to the people who are, who attend, so thanks for sharing with us.
Glad we could have some folks there to attend. I couldn't make it, but I know a couple of you did.
I have a completely couple of things, just to follow up on another time. Trivia B, if we are, I doubt that we are up to this year, but hey, if people want to have a rah-rah on the way out, select board team, that's on October 25th, Thursday, the 25th. That morning is the Chamber Legislative Breakfast, which many of us frequently attend, but in terms of a group thing, we had the group thing, sometimes we've done the trivia B, so if people are thinking about that, that's the date. But the other group thing we do do and that the town takes care of for us is the Chamber A-plus Awards. So are, is that being, I assume someone will ask us.
Sure, we will.
That's being arranged because that first week of October is coming right up on us.
So Ms. Brewer, when you said maybe we'll do like a swan song team, does that include you? Because sometimes you get us all psyched up, but you don't want to be on it.
I did it for years. My role became cheerleader.
No, irrelevant, so if you would be willing to be on it, I would consider it, but if not, don't get us all psyched up.
Let's think about it, because they're going to start sending us emails pretty regularly till we say no.
I think we could have some great costumes for.
What does an outgoing?
Ghost of Select Board Past.
Yes, I'm sure we could, you quite invented. So I think, however, for this evening, that we've gotten through our agenda unless there's other member reports, so if there's nothing else, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And we're adjourned at 9:29.
Head out early.
Which seems so much later. Thank you, Amherst Media.
Because we started.